Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the March 10th meeting of the San Luis Coastal Unified Schools reported meeting. This is a study session. At this time, we'd like to ask those in attendance, please keep your videos off and your audio muted unless you're presenting information or speaking in public comment. We're offering translation services for our Spanish-speaking attendees. To please access translation, click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then the language. At this time, we'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation would please click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand.
Gracias. Yes, buenos dias, bienvenidos a la junta del Consejo Directivo del Distrito Escolar de San Luis Obispo para esta reunión de hoy día para hablar acerca de la sección D. Si hay servicios de interpretación del inglés al español. Si usted necesita ayuda, por favor vaya al final de la pantalla y oprima el globo y déjenos saber si necesita ayuda con el español. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. We have one board member who will be arriving a little bit late to the meeting, and then we have another board member who will not be attending today. She is out of the state visiting her daughter. So we do have a forum. Let's go to item 3.02, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? And we see no one doing that. So let's go to resolution, to item number 4.01, which is resolution number 162122, our local hazard mitigation plan. And Mr. Pickerton, you're going to introduce the people that are here.
Yeah, so we'll start off by, I will just kind of talk a little bit about the local hazard mitigation grant, and then we will have each of our guests kind of introduce themselves and kind of their backgrounds and kind of who they are. But for the board to know, we started off several years ago with kind of a focus, a renewed focus on safety. So that included revising all of our safety plans, that included looking at all of our school sites. You'll remember, we hired Resolute and associates to come on board, and it really helped us do this thorough job of going through everything. Again, all of those items are looking at all of our campuses, looking at our safety plans for the school sites, coming up with a district-wide safety plan, all of that. We were just about to finalize those, kind of move forward with setting up kind of a training plan with our staff and moving forward, and COVID hit at that point. So though we have those plans in place, ready to go and move forward, COVID really put a wrench into kind of the, you know, having our teachers get together, doing plans with kids and parents. And so with that, knowing that, Rob Lewin came to me from Resolute's and said, you know, let's, we should probably look at maybe, you know, what are the other aspects of safety that we could focus on while we're not, you know, kind of moving, you know, moving forward too much with those. So what came up was this federal grant to potentially, you know, go after a hazard mitigation grant and plan, right? So what we found out in working with Rob was that the county had done this work and had gone through and worked with all the communities in the area and had developed a hazard mitigation plan, but did not include school districts. So we weren't part of that, right? And so, you know, because of that, with Resolute's help, we went after a federal grant. We received funds to actually put this plan together. And so Rob then introduced me to category five, we did RFQ-RFP, looking for somebody to help us write that plan, right? Because even for Resolute, that's not necessarily their, you know, though they could help, it wasn't their wheelhouse per se. But it's a specific group that you need to have business to kind of help you put that together, right? So again, we did an RFQ-RFP category five, and I'm going to have Bob and Sherry introduce themselves and talk about their business, but also really tell the board kind of how we came up with this plan that we're asking you to approve today along with the resolution.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm Sherry Hitchens. This is Bob Newman. We're the principal consultants for category five professional consultants located here in San Luis Obispo. Our firm has been specializing in hazard mitigation planning, and for the past 18 years, we've been developing hazard mitigation plans throughout California. We were hired a year ago by San Luis Postal to put together a hazard mitigation plan. And this morning, we just want to briefly tell you what that's all about and what we did. Over the past two years, in addition to a once-in-a-century pandemic, in case that wasn't enough, the U.S. broke all previous records for climate disasters. In 2020, we had 22 separate billion-dollar events. Last year, we had 20 separate billion-dollar climate disasters. In California here over the past two years, the state has found itself under siege for more large-scale fire, wildfire events burning with greater intensity than any time in our record. As we are witnessing the intensity and the frequency of wildfires, droughts, winter storms, flooding, and extreme temperatures across the globe, the cost of these disasters has increased substantially. That brings us to the DME 2000. It's the Disaster Mitigation Act 2000, is also known as the Stafford Act amendments. And essentially, this constitutes an effort by the federal government to reduce the rising cost of disasters by stressing the importance of doing mitigation planning disaster preparedness for the purpose of saving lives, minimizing property damage, and reducing recovery effort spending. For the school district, the benefit in developing a hazard mitigation plan and getting FEMA approval for the plan is it enables the district to apply for hazard mitigation program project funds before a disaster strikes and also allows them to receive federal mitigation funding following a naturally occurring disaster. But also, more importantly, it provides the district with practical, meaningful, attainable, cost-effective mitigation solutions to keep students and staff safe and also to minimize property damage. In developing this, a primary focus of the requisite planning is community involvement. So today, we're pleased to present the combined effort of not only our firm and the school district, but also a community hazard mitigation planning group comprised of 31 individuals that represents a wide range of technical expertise and community interests. Additionally, after we had developed a working draft of the plan, we shared the plan with the general public, and then we held a notice public forum that invited the community and also neighboring jurisdictions to understand what the planning process was all about. And we shared the most important details of the plan with them, and then they had a chance to comment on the plan. And all the feedback we received was actually quite positive. In putting together this plan, we addressed six major categories of natural disasters: wildfire, earthquake, drought, extreme weather, tsunami, and flooding. And while FEMA only requires that we address natural disasters, Ryan asked us if we would also address human-caused and technological hazards as well. So we put together risk assessments for hazardous material spills, utility disruptions, cybersecurity incidents, nuclear power plant incident, and also an active shooter incident.
So throughout the whole planning process, we'll start, Sherry. Eve, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Eve, I can't see your picture. So if you have a question, could you say, hey, I've got a question or something like that?
I can't see my picture either.
Anyway, but if you just say something to me, then we can go for your question, okay?
It's because the screen is being shared.
Yeah, I was wondering if that was necessary because the same picture's staying up there the whole time.
Anyway, I know that, anyway, so if you would just say something, then I'll make sure and call on you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, for sure. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Bob.
Oh, no problem. Throughout the whole planning process, it became obvious that both past and current superintendent school boards have taken very seriously the safety of the students and the staff. Considerable efforts and financial resources have been expended in providing properly-sited and safely-constructed facilities. In addition, your staff has taken an active role in disaster planning, disaster preparedness, and emergency management training. In developing the plan, we carefully reviewed the past history of events that have occurred here within the district, and we've given consideration to the potential impacts that are potentially ahead for us with the climate change. The overall goal of the hazard mitigation plan, as Sherry said, is to reduce the community's vulnerability to naturally occurring hazards and to disrupt the cycle of disaster damage, reconstruction, and then repeat damage. The plan outlines goals and objectives and mitigation actions that over a period of five years will make a concentrated effort at reducing both the risks and the impacts to both people and property from naturally occurring disasters. It is important to note that the mitigation actions we are recommending are socially acceptable, environmentally responsible, and economically feasible. In other words, these actions are attainable. The plan includes an action plan, which delineates who is responsible to carry out each of the mitigation actions and how they will be funded, and outlines the timeframes in which we hope to accomplish them. After the school district project managers and the hazard mitigation planning group and the general public had an opportunity to review the plan, they provided us with their feedback. The feedback, the plan in its entirety, was sent to the State Office of Emergency Services, the hazard mitigation officer, and then on to FEMA for FEMA approval. We did receive FEMA approval for this plan last week, dependent upon your approval of the plan today. In closing, Sherry and I would like to thank your staff for their support. We did thoroughly enjoy working with them. They were very supportive. We'd also like to thank the community members that provided their time and their input. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And again, we thank you for the opportunity.
Evelyn, do you have a question?
Yeah, anybody else?
Catherine.
You talked about a bottom line of the cost of protection. Do we, do we have that in the numbers?
You know, we've never really totaled up all those various things. A lot of the things that we attempt to accomplish are driven by grants. So, you know, there's a fair amount of grant funding out there that we can hopefully take advantage of over that five-year period.
Just in terms of what the raw cost would be, notwithstanding what we have and what we have access?
No, we have not totaled up. You know, we've given very good educated guests working with Ryan for the various actions that were recommending us, how they might come together, but we've never driven a dollar value to them.
Okay, one thing at a time, right?
Yeah.
So we'll do that first. Couple of questions.
Eve, before you start, can anybody tell me where the microphone that we're using is? Because apparently it's kind of hard for, I know we use that as a controller, but apparently it's kind of hard to hear Catherine, so we'll move more towards Catherine. Let's see if that's better. May I let you know if that's better, okay? Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Evelyn.
Okay, so a couple of questions, and I don't know, one would be the grant that we did apply. Do we have a number of, for that grant?
So the grant, the first grant was just a planning grant, which basically paid for, you know, for this group to put the plan together. I mean, that's kind of what it is, right, in terms of this aspect of it? Again, what this does now, because we will have a plan that's been approved hopefully by the board today, and we'll go back to FEMA and get approved. What that does is that now allows us to go out for more grant dollars. You know, for example, there's a fire danger behind San Luis Obispo High School, a farm, the tree, oak dead, you know, bushes, trees, types of things. So, you know, there are grants to have people come in and clear those areas, right? So because we'll have this plan now on the books, we'll be able to actually apply for those. So that's just one example. That's where Rob comes in, after this plan is approved, right? Because he has great knowledge of these types of grants, things we can go forward, move forward with. So, you know, we'll be tapping on him to go after some of those things as we, you know, move forward.
And the other thing, as you mentioned when you were talking about is kind of past history. Do we have an articulation kind of of what those were? And yeah, there's a risk assessment for each of the natural hazards and also the human-caused hazards that includes a past history. Do we, have we seen that?
It's in the plan.
It's in the plan.
Yeah, it's 200, I mean, this plan is over 200 pages, right? So, I mean, there's a lot, so everything from flooding, Evelyn, to past earthquakes we've had in the area, to wildfires. I mean, there's just all of those things. So Sherry, Bob, as they're putting this together, they look back way back into history, right? And then that then helps them make a determination of, okay, what are, and again, there's a whole risk assessment that goes through, or low, medium, high. What is the, what's the risk of an earthquake? What's the risk of flood? What's the risk of sea level increases, those types of things, right? And though we didn't plan it on purpose, the fact that we're going to talk about climate change resolution after this is kind of like it just goes right-hand in hand, right? So it's just, you know, an interesting time, you know, aspect of it. But yeah, all of that information went into their, you know, our conversation about those risk levels and each of those areas that he described.
And it also looks at the percentage of damage based upon each hazard to the school's vulnerable facilities and infrastructure.
And one of the nice things, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bob.
One of the nice things is we are a local firm. Sherry worked for the public health department for years. I worked for the party department for years. So we've been around, our kids went through this history, you know, so we're, we know the school was there.
Mark, thanks. Thanks. One of the things that I did see, it concerns me a little bit, is the fiber optic system. So in the technology section, we have the UMAN system. So I'm just wondering how dependent the district is, and I think the city and county both rent space or give them space.
Yeah, it's got a joint ownership.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Hollywood County and our school districts.
Oh, let me do, so historically, we put it in, right, district name, or?
I think so.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm just, I'm just concerned to make sure that we include it somehow. Because I think, I don't know what our, what our communication system is like. And then, I don't know, just make it a little next time. Highway 101 shut down during a rainstorm this last time. And that's wholly going to affect us. I don't know if this is part of it. So our emergency, if I can remember, Bob, we evacuated kids to the fairgrounds. So I'm just wondering, is that part of this mitigation or do we?
So this is a mitigation plan. It's not an emergency response plan. We do talk about the fact that we've lost Highway 101 eight years past. And so, you know, as Rob develops your emergency response plan, so those actions are covered there. And let me just step back to the issue of the
Sorry, thank you.
The undergrounding of your fiber optic. We did work extensively with Jeremy. And as I recall, we could quickly run in here, I kind of think, I'll go back and review.
Yeah, so, and I just have, usually I read every single word, everything you give. And this has to be the second or third time in like 16 years that I have not. But I did skip to the back, but I didn't even read all of it, so I apologize.
Yeah.
But
It's not written in reading.
I haven't got any glasses, but, but yeah, I appreciate it. It's really, really exciting. Thank you.
Okay, hi, I apologize for my lateness. And it may be that when I was arriving, you were explaining to Evelyn, and I just missed it, the grant funding possibilities, because I know that this is noted as cost neutral. And is that, I missed it, but you did explain how
Evelyn, yeah, so the purpose of this plan really is twofold, and Bob and Sherry talked about it once. If the board passes by and we have it in place, federal government recognizes it, we have a hazard mitigation. Two things, one, we can go after grants that help ensure that we don't have disasters, like if they're in a brush, like making sure that, you know,
Sorry to make you wait.
Flood, no, it's okay. Flooding issues, you know, our safety plan, those types of things. So we can go with those pre-mitigation types of grants, right? But it's also, should an incident happen, this also allows us to go after federal dollars, should, you know, the passable ones, right? The middle school there, the gym has, you know, structural issues because of the earthquake. Like by having this plan in place, it allows us to go after those federal funds as well.
So are you saying, are you saying cost neutral?
To put the plan in place. To the plan, yes.
But to implement some various aspects of the plan, if there were to be a disaster of some sort, it would not be cost neutral to us.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then my second question, just because you made introductions.
Oh, no.
I know Rob, but I'm surprised to see Bob Newman here.
It is surprising.
And it is.
He was waiting for you to come here.
It's nice to see him, but I'm wondering how Bob and his associate, how they're used to this.
Yeah, so they, Sherry, let's introduce them.
So Bob and I have been working together as a principal consultants for category five for the last 18 years, and we've been doing hazard mitigation planning throughout the state since that time. So we were hired last year through my hazard mitigation grant to put this together for us.
True, okay.
Yeah, that's how it is.
That's how we got it. Thank you.
Okay.
And then on, another aspect of this too is for Mark, you know, Mark brought this up to me and we discussed it a little bit, was it's always really weird when you do something like this because you're pointing out your flaws, right? You're showing the world kind of like, these are the things we may not be prepared for, right? When in reality, we're probably better prepared than any other school district, right? In terms of in the state of California. So I just want you to know that that is something, right? It does, it makes you feel a little, you know, kind of eerie a little bit, right? Like even all the safety planning we talked about, I mean, there's still a ton of things we need to do. Doesn't mean our schools aren't safe, or that we're not, you know, doing more than anyone else, but there's always room for improvement, right? But like Mark pointed out, it just makes you, you know, when you look at it, you put it out there type of thing, it's just kind of a tough, you know, it's hard to look at sometimes, right? But I think that's the, you have to do this to be able to move forward and make those plans and have sense of it. You know, if we're going to move forward and do these things, at some point, you have to kind of, you know, show kind of where you're at.
Yeah, we shouldn't be fearful of identifying.
No, no, but, but it's still, it's, you know, it's tough.
So I just, I mean, and I, and thanks, Ryan, we did talk for a while. I, this for me created a lot of anxiety, mostly, and then Ryan helped. But there's things in here that scare me, when you talk about fire alarm systems and access to campuses.
Yeah.
So to Marilyn's point about grants, I actually, I actually went and looked, and so I just, I know you, but there's grants for fencing. It's just amazing what's out there. There's grants for fire alarm systems. So to the question about the overall cost, I mean, if I can find them, then I'm pretty sure that we're going to be pretty good. I get this in perfect, this did create a lot of burden. And we may be better than everybody, but we still have, we still have some problems.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Well, I think, Sherry.
I was just going to clarify what Ryan said. I mean, the main part of this plan is the mitigation actions that help reduce the vulnerability. And for hearing out those mitigation actions, because we did just get FEMA approval, we are eligible to get grants for those.
But I think it's important to point out that there are things in here that the district itself will have to pay for.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I think we'll need to look at how some of those things we do pay for. The hard, the hard stuff, but then there's the soft stuff as well, which looks like professional development, for example. I noticed that there were areas at schools that didn't really see, people didn't really seem to know what their responsibilities were, didn't seem to know how to, some of how some of the things worked, you know, stuff like that. So we're going to have, I don't know if those are soft costs or hard costs, but we're definitely going to have costs related to that. And I think the other thing I was curious about was, and I think it was clarified, so we have the hazard mitigation plan, but then we're going to have our emergency response plan, which is kind of what the Diablo, the current Diablo plan we have is right now. That addresses a lot of that.
The Diablo plan is essentially an appendix to your emergency plan. It's a, it's one of the annexes of the things that we have to do, as well as earthquakes, tsunami, flood, so there's, yes. I think if they could just try and, I think the other thing about this is it's an opportunity now. So say your folks are building something new. Now, there's, if there's a safety element, if there's a mitigation to making it so there isn't as much damage in an earthquake, as an example, they can apply for a grant now to help fund up to 75% generally of a project. So say you need a new generator, or you're doing a project and maybe a generator would be valuable to have at site. Now that generator could well be part of a grant application. So a lot of the projects that are listed in here are while you're doing improvements, you can obtain funding. But the overall, most important part of this is unfortunately, it's happened too many times in California in the last few years. Schools are getting damaged in a variety of ways. They're getting damaged in fires, many in Santa Rosa, as well as up in other state areas, Paradise, et cetera. They're getting involved in, you know, the whole active shooter thing. Those, once they're proclaimed an emergency, at the state or federal level, funding can now come to the school district to help pay for some of the, offset some of those costs. Generally, those costs can be offset up to 75%, but oftentimes, the president will even give 100% reimbursement for costs. And we could not have gotten that from the district without completing this project.
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, I was thinking about a report I read of the Cole-Winger earthquake and how it damaged schools, I think, in ways that were unexpected. You know, things flying off the shelves, tide riders flying off the shelves, things in the chemistry labs, you know, flying off the shelves and burning holes in the floor, you know, just things we never, we never would have expected. How about, and then the passive global issue. So I was kind of wondering about, you know, what happened at Flamsen, where FEMA came in, where they thought they were spending FEMA money, and then there was this dispute between the amount of FEMA money that was being spent and the way they did it. How, will this help us with that, with that kind of plan?
Well, the most important part in your emergency draft, the draft emergency plan, we have talks a lot about recovery, the recovery phase of a disaster. The response phase is usually over quickly, but when the recovery phase happens, it is absolutely critical that we are minding our financial efforts to include everything that FEMA and CalOES requires. And fortunately, we can do that, and San Luis City is up to speed on doing that. And COVID has pushed everybody into being able to make sure they're tracking their dollars better. I understand, and maybe Bob and Sherry have more information, but the issues at Flamsen, as well as the city of the Caspero's city hall, were that they didn't do the right work on capturing the financial impacts from disasters. So when it came time to get FEMA recovery, they didn't have their paperwork in line. And that's where we don't want to be. And that's some of the training that we've been putting on and will put on for the district and have put on, for example, the city. The county, of course, has a lot of experience, is that you do that upfront right away, day one of an emergency.
Chris, is that the kind of thing I was going to say that falls in your lap, Ryan?
Chris, Lynn and I actually recently, last year, went through all the federal emergency management. So they had Diablo, they actually had workshops for us to go through those phases and to learn it. And that, exactly what Rob's saying, is like that is their push, from day one, letting all the costs down, laying everything out.
It sounds like, you need to make sure we have structures in your office that are going to be ready to go for if, not if, when this happens to us. And I guess the last question I have right now is, are these grants that we're talking about, are they the kinds of things like with our, with our state bonding, where you get in line, and if you're like first in line, if you're eligible, you get it, and otherwise, you're just kind of, you know, you're out of luck?
I mean, they have deadlines on application, obviously, but the money is given to the highest need, and they base it on a variety of metrics. But schools, of course, would be a very, I think they want to do more at schools, particularly with all the issues of safety that's going on with schools.
So, that brings my question. So, you know, given that the highest area of need and, you know, potential, you know, setting things in place, so there's no way to predict where we would fall. It's at the moment, so.
And it depends on the, of what we're applying for, right? And there's low-hanging fruit, like for example, training would be a good one. If we're trying to train all the staff in emergency management training, and that's expensive to do, especially if you're paying overtime. So this is a way that we could apply. And that's expensive uh, to do, especially if you're paying overtime. Um, so this is a way that we could apply for a grant now that we couldn't have before. Uh, and hopefully do that, you know, uh, you know, in your head time. We have a lot of training that we'd like to do. You, you've already identified that you want to.
Mark, did you?
Yeah, thanks. So, so one of the things I meant, so when I looked at the mitigation action eight point two C on fire alarm upgrade, don't look it up. On fire alarm upgrades, it looked to me like about fourteen or fifteen in the school sites. Or indeed of, and I know at some point we had one school, Ryan, which it didn't work at all. And it doesn't, so, and, and then there's like, one that was like, most of the schools or large schools don't have a name and address in the street or in front of them. And it did, it, that didn't sound important, but it also sounds like some of those are not that hard to fix. I mean, is there anything in here where prioritize is, and I wouldn't prioritize that, but it was pretty much by school site, at the district level? Whatever, just get the, get the addresses done or get is the fire alarms, you know, number one across the district?
Yeah, in the previous, in the previous document that we did on the two side school site, that was done, and Chris Bond and staff have been poking way out. All of those things that are on there are already, are already completed.
Okay. For fire alarms, right? We're, we're fixing them when we can, we're band-aiding till we get to the modernization of some of the buildings. It's a two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar fix.
And he's shy, and he's shy, or?
Yeah, for, for fire alarms, yeah.
For replacement.
For replacement.
Yeah.
Both job and physicals.
And update, and update to these standards, right?
Nice, got it.
It changed quite a bit, but we also have protocols in place when fire alarm workers for a couple of days where everybody is, is on watch.
Okay.
And there's a, we have a format, we set up the principal's staff so they know
Okay.
that fire alarm is, is being fixed.
Thanks, I was losing, that's one of my thoughts.
And all the mitigation actions are prioritized?
Especially by, like district wide, as far as I know, it was site by site.
No, if they're uh, prioritized based on um, high need, medium need, low need, FEMA requires that we prioritize, when needs to be addressed.
First, in our district or?
Yes, in the climate. I'm sorry, Marilyn, we could, we could. All the mitigation actions that we came up with are prioritized.
Okay, let me try to make sure this. I, I, I read the site ones, so is there, maybe I missed the papers, and then you look at the district and keep riding the horse, that fire alarms are the biggest across the district. I can see that, that kind of level of prioritization.
Not, not specific.
It's not that specific. It's not quite, not that specific. Alright, thanks.
And then, so as new information comes up, like I remember, I think last week I read that there's new information about earthquake fault, earthquake hazards in our county. So is that, do you guys update that? How's that gonna work?
There's a maintenance section on the plan, so um, you're required to update it every five years, but we've also put in a recommendation for annually taking a look at the plan every year, just to make sure that all the mitigation actions that we've come up with are still current and applicable, and see if there's any other priorities that you wanna add.
Eve, do you have any questions? I can see you now, and I was just wondering if you had questions.
No, but I, 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 I have a minor one, I guess. If I heard right, because audible isn't excellent for us out here, but um, audio, I mean, so um, when Mark brought up putting addresses on the school, was that right? Uh, is that even needed in this day of artificial intelligence nap navigation where, you know, you said, if you say, Siri, direct me to Laguna Middle School, she'll know where it is, right? So.
Listen.
Yeah.
Well, schools obviously need to be addressed, you know, um. Most, I mean, I can tell you as a firefighter in this community, we know our schools, you know, by heart. Um, but yeah, you need to add those schools, that would be a high priority, and they need to be, you know, plainly, plainly marked. Yeah, part of that, Eve, was uh, in response to Rob and Garrett Olson had put together uh, kind of looked at each of our sites and what are the things that we should work on. And so one of those was clear, like this is where the office is, this is where you go to type of thing, you know. So we have a school like Teach, which is kind of over on the side, right? And you just look in the front, so just making sure that when somebody pulls up, you know, like this is where you enter into type of thing. So that, that was just, that, that's kind of where that came from.
Yeah, fine, just, just start following along with that. I assume that if we had a major disaster, we're gonna have, we're gonna have first responders from all over the state coming.
From everywhere.
And so we're gonna need to make sure for that, you know. So one of the things I know we've talked about is the ability to electronically have plans for our buildings. But are, can those be shared to with other responders who are not within our county? They, do you see what I'm saying, Rob?
Yes, so the, the fire service, I think, has been leaning way in on being able to get digitized, what they call pre-attack plans or pre-plans, and um, they're on different scales, they're at a very regional level for the, you know, the, just the city or region, and then they're down to specific buildings that are high risk. The, in the sheriff's office in the county made an effort to do one specifically for active shooters. So this sort of has been going on. But it could be a way that, it, it won't be on the first day, but as a disaster is developing and crews are coming in, then those will be made with the data that's already available. You have excellent pre, uh, pre-attack maps, if you will, already at each school that are used. They're in a way, and built in a way that are usable and readable.
Anything I can, Chris?
Yeah.
So.
There was a time I served on the county's, they know, the sheriff's office, but it's like, one of the first things at the, one of the largest school shootings, the first ones, is the cell phone system was so clogged immediately that it was useless. I mean, the public for sure, I don't know if you guys have some secret system, I don't wanna know, but um, but for the general public, yeah, you can, the cell towers were just jammed.
Yeah, so cellular service is still a very vulnerable system. It's not regulated as heavily as say utilities are, um, that's a problem, and we are all relying on them in ways. So some of the workarounds, we should anticipate that during a catastrophe particularly, that we won't have good cellular or limited cellular, right? So the system will be able to bring in new systems, the system should, can be put back together relatively quickly. The good news is, is your district has satellite phones. So even if they lose, that your leadership has the ability to communicate that way, at least to the county and some other places. Now, of course, even satellite's gonna be overwhelmed by use. Um, so, you know, in the, in the end, we're going, the plan that your district has is to get people to the school sites from the head, from the district headquarters to there and back and forth at minimum. So always relying on any kind of backup systems that you have, including just the old fashioned getting out there in that way.
And we've also, again, for the board to know, we've, we've made, you know, all these things that we've talked about, we're making sense, right? So this year in particular, Mr. Bond went out, all new handheld radios
Oh, yes, yeah.
at all of our sites, right? Uh, purchased satellite phones as well, right, as a backup for the school district cell.
In that mix of radios, we, we changing systems, so now I got admin radios on order. So for like Dr. Prater, Ryan, myself, roll up, we have radio, we can tune in to the site radios.
Right.
So we're not looking for a radio or a cell phone, we can actually tune into that channel that site.
Sorry, that was a little bit to my, it's a little bit to my question that you raised. It's great until it's not.
But, but we still have, there's a lot of training that now needs, like we have these cool gadgets and tools, but now we need to like facilitate that, have training, decide to do that, and that's where COVID has kind of held us up from that.
Okay.
Right? The in-person doing these types of things, but we're hopefully around that corner. Right? Hopefully we're at a point now where we could start to bring Rob back in and Resolute could stop worrying about COVID things, and we can get back on the emergency planning side. Um, you know, I think we all look forward to that.
Other questions from board members?
Yeah, one other question. So how, you know, when you're, and one of the things that, you know, you said was, was the kind of annual update, you know, to reevaluate in response to changing conditions or changing risk assessments. How do you, uh, and I'm thinking in particular, the community of Los Osos, which there is a huge issue with, um, you know, we're not getting really the rain right now, but when we do get the rain, there's huge issues of flooding around that community access and transportation. And so there's, are we including some of those, um, you know, risk factors that already kind of endemic to certain communities when you're looking at this plan?
Most definitely. You know, we took a look at each individual school site and critical infrastructure, you know. It's not only schools that we looked at, it's, you know, the whole overall system. And, you know, we, we took a hard look. You know, while Los Osos has some what we would call surface flooding, it's really not flooding per se. It's stuff that will come and go, you know, um, it's not located on a significant drainage, you know, like a number of your other schools are. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a nuisance flooding, you can call it that. But it also only addresses the schools too.
No, 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 obviously the access.
Right? Like our, our plan only looks at our school sites and how they're affected by not, you know, the community streets and everything else.
No, 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 obviously even in terms of access. You know how certain things, you know, like, like certain places, you know, that roads and things like that, so you talked about like LVR, and I know we can't address that, but it's access, we're thinking getting to.
Yeah. And again, this is not an emergency response plan.
Okay.
Hazard mitigation. It's, 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 yeah.
Chris, you bring up a great point in that, one of the, even though a school may not be impacted directly by the flooding, students, for whatever the emergency is, may be unable to be picked up by their parents or unable to be taken home by a bus. So the schools, and they've done a lot of work already since we've already worked through this problem, but you know, how do the schools have enough supplies on hand and enough supervision to be able to take care of those students for prolonged periods of time, until they can be safely, you know, uh, reunified with their families? So there's two elements to that that are part of the plan, is how do we make sure the schools can take care of students for extended period of time easily, you know, in, indoor and outdoor, depending on what the emergency is, and then how can they, or some offsite place? And then how can they successfully reunify every student with their custodial care, you know, so that, those are all important elements, and that's what we need to train on.
I think you, you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to say freeze dried fruit, freeze dried food, it's, say that fast fifteen times. Uh, freeze dried food, that's the way I responded home to in case there were an emergency, and propane stoves.
And I think, I was gonna say, probably fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years ago, there was a lockdown at Morro Bay High School for a number of hours, and one of the issues was sanitation.
Oh.
Remember that?
Remember.
We, that was, that was a big deal, because I, I think the students were locked down in their classrooms, actually.
Right, they had to use the.
They had to use trash cans, and it was pretty, pretty, pretty crazy. Yeah, Mark, so when you consider this, and I'm thinking about the get the kids reunited and maybe change, is there still, just touching or not, is there still a lot of mandates that teachers, I think the first responder, that they have to stay on site when an emergency is declared?
That's more, again, that's more emergency plan.
And I, every government employee is a disaster service worker. When they raise their right hand and swear to the California and US Constitution, they're a disaster service worker, and therefore they have to contribute to, you know, to the disaster management, but um, I don't think you're ever gonna have any problem with teachers. The big issue that we all have to worry about with teachers is they also have families. And so that has to be taken into the equation of how do we manage our staff and make sure they're okay? And their families are okay as well as taking care of their students. So the plan has a whole section on employee care as well.
Thank you. Cool.
So when?
Anything else? I'm sorry, no.
When do we anticipate being able to begin the PD? And how extensive will it be in our estimation, and what will be our funding source for it?
Well, so again, Resolute, we have a plan. It's ready to roll.
Okay.
We also have a capacity issue with, with staff and what they can handle and move forward with. So I think that'll be something that now that COVID has had to turn, we'll, again, Rob and I will get back together, start developing that timeline of PD and how we roll this out to staff in a, you know, measurable way that they can handle and make sense, right, uh, as we move forward. But it's not just that, I don't want you to think it's a, hey, we're gonna go out to Monor Road and tell all the teachers, this is what you do in emergency, and we're good, right? Like, oh, this is, I mean, this is gonna take, you know, it, it'll be a five-year plan, right, roll out in terms of, you know, and, and for me, it's the step by step, is get the little things first, right? Uh, as we move forward and then, well, you know, we can begin to have some drills, you know, reunification drills and those types of things. You know, we've, again, we've done these things, you know, both Morro Bay High and San Luis Obispo High have worked with agencies and have done uh, intruder drills on their campuses, multi-agency efforts, right? So some of this has happened, but not in a systematic way, which will be nice, right? And that's something that, I mean, Rob's, we've already worked on it, it's, it's ready to go. It's just COVID has kind of kept us from rolling that out at this point in terms of.
Well, and if you, you do a drill and five years pass, you have a largely different staff, right, and memory spade, so there needs to be.
And, and again, they still do fire drills, they do lockdown drills, they do uh, earthquake drills at all their sites still, like this is going to be above and beyond our normal drills that we do, you know, throughout the year, right? I mean, this is really like, you know, you know, at, at the end of the school day today, we're gonna break fifteen minutes early, and we're gonna have all the teachers do a reunification drill where they, this is what we would do if there was an emergency. Everybody gets in their spots, right? Who's gonna check kids out, where are the cards going? I mean, it's just a whole huge process. Um, what people wear vests, what their name badges are, you know, all those types of things that, um, that we'll, you know, we'll get into. It's, again, it's ready to roll. We did all that work already, it was ready to go. We were about to put that in place, and COVID did, and then kids weren't on campus.
So you're doing that today, later today? This is something you're doing later today?
No, 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 no. Not today, the climate change, we're talking about climate right now, this riot, which is, uh, which ties riot into disaster preparedness, but. But yeah, so I, again, I feel good about it, I feel like we're in a good spot, you're gonna be in terms of moving forward now. Uh, then, just so you know too, we're, again, leading the effort, right? All the other school districts in the county now are like, oh, we should probably have a hazard mitigation plan. And so they're actually all combining to do a plan now for all the school districts.
So it sounds like, sounds like this is something, uh, we need to, that, that could be a presentation at CSBA, actually. Eve, you have your hand up?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the training, the emergency training. Um, many years ago, when I taught at Hap, in Lompoc, at Hap Good School, they had a such a thorough triage training as to who do you go to first, and who do you not go to because it's no use? I mean, we had role playing, we had everything. Among the staff, I don't, we, we didn't get the teachers and, um, excuse me, we didn't get the students involved because that would have been a fear creation probably, but we teachers and staff, you know, were very, very thorough about that. Is that the kind of thing you're talking about? Would that be included?
That, that would be part of it, absolutely.
Yeah, there's a program now called Stop the Bleed, which is the most critical thing to learn. That's, it came, a lot of it learned, it came out of the Boston bombing, um, the importance of that. And so that's a simple program, it doesn't even take very long to do that training. Um, so there's, that's an element of many things. I, the most complicated thing that staff will have to do is reunification. And so we know that one has to be done sooner than later, and it can happen for any variety of emergencies, but obviously, the one we all think of is when there's a, a violence on campus. So, um, you know, good focus, and maybe now with this, we have an opportunity to get some grant money to help fund it, so we can pay staff to be able to participate.
And again, we've been doing this along the way, right? So I just want the board to know. So like, when we started this with Resolute, we had, we had a really shoddy kind of system of CPR training. Who's trained, who's not, who should be trained, who shouldn't be trained. So that now, I mean, it's, we have it all. It's all by the side, it's all laid out. We have specific teams, right, that are CPR trained at each of our sites. Um, you know, that's all part of our A D D plan that we update annually. I mean, so there's a, we, we are doing a lot of things. You know, COVID didn't stop all things from happening, right? Uh, but, but the in-person training part of it definitely, you know, kind of took a backseat to, um, you know, to the needs of the time, right? But, but we'll, we'll move forward with it now.
Yeah, and so, what we'll do is, order, when you're done with your questions, I'll go to the public and assess the power and resolution. So Marilyn, the.
Yeah, I, I don't uh, wanna seem excessively concerned with money, because I know these are things that we, we need to do, have to do, and will do. But um, returning to Mr. Bond, and the fire alarms. But returning to Mr. Bond and the fire alarms, I'm assuming that under measure D, we have working fire alarms in all of the, um, the sites that we touched with the, with measure D, is that a correct assumption?
Correct.
So then, as we moving, going forward and we want to address issues at other sites, absent a bond, would we be using deferred maintenance monies or what, what would be our, our funding source to begin to?
If there's no bond, it'll be our preferred maintenance money. And we address them, like we did, uh, La Sosa's middle school, we did a complete system there. But at Laguna, we're gonna have some problems. So we're going in and just replacing the panel and leaving all the detectors in the classroom. So we still have a fire alarm, it's like, when we have the funding, we're gonna pick which one is the worst at the time that we're having most problems with. And we'll, we'll address them one by one according to budget.
And that said, if that fire alarm goes down, that becomes a prior rewatch. And we, let's do it. So La Sosa's middle school is no longer able to be patched.
Yeah.
So we have to do that. And so, uh, when we look at priorities, again, there's a lot of needs in the school district, right? We facility master plan to bring to you at next board meeting, five hundred million dollars worth of things that we should, you know, modernize, fix at our schools.
Right, we know there's a lot.
It becomes, is it, are we doing roofs? Are we doing, you know, like what, there's all kinds of things we need to do. So it becomes a, do you, does the, do you just lift the fire alarm along like we have at many sites, right? Because, you know, roofs are, you know, more important in terms of the, you know, the, uh, the campus itself or feeding, you know, kids at school and all the things that go into it. So it's just prioritizing those deferred maintenance funds, which is, which is a small part.
Yeah, well, you, I guess we've been looking at, if you don't, if you have an, a fire alarm system that is not operable versus a roof that's failing, are you gonna have wet kids or are you gonna have collapsed roofs? You know, what, and then, of course, we have to have fire alarms, so.
So just all the fire alarms do work. Now, it's a matter of like, like Laguna, having problems with panels, so yeah, it might be down for a few days till we figure out how, you know, we replace the whole system or we replace just the panel, then it comes back up, right? So, or we're not having, we're having communication problems when we put a cell, cell dialer in there so it still is communicating. You know, if, if they're down for a while, we, it goes on fire watch, basically. All staff's notified, there's a protocol, basically everybody becomes a live fire alarm.
But that's not a long-term solution.
That's not long-term, but the systems aren't down for like not working at all, right? For long periods of time.
Okay, I understand, okay, I understand.
The most, the most common problem with fire alarms is false alarms.
Yes.
And your staff gets exhausted by those, your principals are getting called in the middle of the night, your, your building staff is getting called to go join the fire department out at two in the morning to deal with false alarms. So the systems being, they work, but they need to be reliable and not.
They are generating their own false alarms?
Yeah.
Yes.
Especially when it rains.
Really critical, they get bored and crank. So I mean.
Do you have rains at yours lately?
Especially when it rains, with the water.
Okay, so just one, I have one last question that, um, I know that our demographic studies show that our enrollment is essentially flat, looking out over ten years. But if we were to see an increase in enrollment in town based on the new construction, if it were to happen, then would these kinds of things be a legitimate use of developer fees?
Not, not for modern, not for modernization, something like that, no.
Okay, thank you.
So first.
Let's be tied to the growth.
Elwin first and then Eve?
Okay, well, this is, I'm gonna, Marilyn brought a question, but she was asking, so when you were, when you were talking about deferred maintenance, so do we have a figure of the percent of our budget that is dedicated to deferred maintenance and do we, what's that?
It's three percent, but it includes all of the workers as well.
Cool.
So Rick's, what, what's?
So that's a personnel cost and?
Yeah, it ties into, right? There's a lot of personnel that goes into that three percent. So, I mean, Rick Simpson has a, has an annual budget that.
Yeah, we go over his budget and we have a very detailed, which we share with you, where a very detailed sheet of breaks down all of deferred maintenance and costs and what we're trying to do in the next, you know, five, ten years.
We have a deferred maintenance plan.
Right? So with tied with that, you know, it's a, it's a living document, so we're always rearranging, you know?
So who sets that three percent?
That's a statement.
A statement.
Okay, so the, the district can pay, so choose could go.
We, we already do, we spend more than three percent.
Three percent would be about three million dollars, yeah?
Roughly. We're getting lots of staffing.
Yeah, but it's really like more, for us, it's more like a million dollars.
It's about a million dollars now here probably that goes towards, is all the projects that we have.
Which goes fast, when you do a fire alarm, two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, like we can do three projects and be done. So, you know, it's that balance of just our normal.
It's gonna fill all the needs, what it happens.
Yeah.
Or, or a two million dollar roof at La Sosa's middle school.
Yeah.
Five.
Five, I thought it was two.
Long term.
Okay. Um, first, Elwin and then Eve?
No, I asked.
Yeah.
Okay, Eve?
Yes, about, a few minutes ago, our presenter said, if there's no bond, then it goes to what? Our school budget is, I couldn't hear the word.
It deferred maintenance, so it'll be part of our school budget, yeah, general fund.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions for board members before I go to the public? Okay, I'm gonna go to the public, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board on this item? Mrs. Dawson, will you let me know, please? Okay, so I see no one from the public, this is, uh, an action item, it is a resolution. Would someone like to make a motion for resolution sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, approval of the local hazard mitigation plan?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Roger.
Second. Second.
Okay, I was seconded by Eve, you okay with that, Mark?
Oh, no, yeah, I was referring to her.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion by Mrs. Roger, a second by Ms. Dobler Drew, is there any further board discussion on this item? Okay, sing none, we'll make it a roll call vote. Ms. Dobler Drew?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Isaac Roth Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frame?
Yes.
Mr. Buckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries six, zero. Thank you very much. Before we end this item, is there anything else you wanna talk about with this? Because Dr. Prater, we need to, we need to get a consensus on the board about start times of meetings. And I'd like to do that before we start the next section, the next section.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, thank you, thanks you guys so much. Nah. Do you care, say other word for him?
I will. Well, thank you, Mr. Unger, I was supposed to remind you and you remind me, Eve, so that worked out.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
I mean.
We'll be in touch.
Tell Marley I said hello, would you?
Yeah.
Mark and Catherine, Mark, Catherine, could you guys kind of criticize another place?
Yeah, so.
Mark, oh, this is great, I see you.
When you, I, I simply have a request, a consensus request. When you look at our, uh, three meeting calendar that we do, um, uh, based on the board meeting presentation calendar established from our board priorities at the start of the year, you begin to see how all the topics that we need to cover based on the priorities um, that the board has established are, are laid out throughout the year. And because of a variety of reasons, um, that we've experienced this year, our board meetings have become, um, more complicated because of topics that have come up, um, regarding a variety of things. And instead of, uh, starting our board meetings at six PM in open session, uh, our board meetings are typically running about four hours, even when we scale back the topics. So.
That's a short.
That is a short, a short version of that, but around four to five hours. And so as we head into the next several meetings, going into June, the board is gonna be asked to review LCAPs, budgets. We have presentations that are relevant to the LCAP and relevant to the, um, direction of our district that will require discussion. And so, um, what I'm asking the boards for a consensus is, do you feel comfortable starting our board meetings from here to June? So the next maybe six board meetings, uh, that we start our board meetings at five instead of six, which then means we start closed session typically around four. And, um, and in order to do that, and if we do that, then we typically will be completed by between nine and ten PM, even with that adjustment. Um, we are, we will continue to do hybrid meetings like we've been, uh, given the new legislative act, we can continue with this model. Um, and I think, uh, as long as we communicate that out with the public so they're aware, um, I just think it would, um, it would give our board, um, some, a little more energy during the meeting uh, and so that doesn't go, um, beyond, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night. So I just think that if you're okay with that, I'd like to get a consensus so that we can do that from here to June. And then when we start back up in, um, in, uh, July or August, we'll, we'll go back to the normal six PM start time. If that's okay with the board.
So Mark, Mark's good with it, Catherine, you good with it?
Uh, yeah, come here.
Elwin, no, Mark, Mark's just giving you some.
Oh, I was just doing that, yes, I, yeah, I was just, I, I was, I was just making sure that you didn't receive this as a little energy.
I was actually, yeah, no, nothing like that, nothing like that.
Yeah.
I have a question though.
First, we'll be okay with it, but I, I think that we need to, um, consult Mrs. Shepherd, who is still working and, um, make sure that that's, that, that she's able to accommodate that schedule and also revisit this in June, sort of have a hard stop in June and a revisitation of it.
Yeah, I agree, and, and I want you to know, Marilyn, I appreciate that. I, I did ask Mrs. Shepherd on Monday when we met in, in Clerk.
Okay.
If that was okay with her because she is, um, working quite a lot and she said that it would be okay with her to do that.
Okay, because I am flexible, I assume others are, are flexible, she's the one who has, um, some considerations.
Right, and Eve had a question?
Yes, I agree with, um, what Marilyn suggested, but just as a matter of interest, why would we need to change back, as you originally said, Dr. Prater, to six o'clock starting for the new year? I mean, you know.
Probably answer, if we have to decide.
His, yeah, yeah, Ms. Dobler Drew, that's a really good question. And historically, we started a board meet, we start board meetings at six PM to honor parents, families that work and maybe get off work at five and then they get home and then they could. Now typically, typically, we, pre-COVID, we had, um, we only recorded the board meetings. But if you wanted to attend a board meeting, you needed to come physically to the meeting, which made six o'clock more important.
That's true.
But now that we're, now that we're doing it in a hybrid format, you could make the argument that, um, people could still participate in the board meeting. Um, and we do see it with a number of our participants over the last two years, that they're actually zooming in during, while they're at work. And, um, and so it, it just is a, I think, a silver lining, uh, with our board, with, with COVID in that, uh, this, the hybrid model where you could participate via Zoom or in person, we're seeing much more participation than we ever have. And I, I think it's a positive thing and it warrants the discussion at the board workshop perhaps in the summer about how to proceed after, um, as we start the new year with our, uh, board times, our board meeting times.
So for me, I think one of the things that we've seen and one of the things that it's always been very close to my heart and goes to Marilyn starting at that time, this is the most democratic part of the democracy that I've ever seen. Anybody local can come talk to their local representatives, be given a fair shake, Chris is running some amazing meetings. Um, so having it at an hour when the public can attend, even more now, it's really important to me. So I'm with Marilyn on this, I'm okay for, till June, but I'm really cautious about proceeding with starting. I would just, I would just, I, I, I'm for it, I'm, I'll support it. Um, I would just point out that when I first started, I think we started our meetings either seven or seven.
Yeah.
And they would last until y'all left at night.
Yeah.
Elwin?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I would, I would just caution us again, you know, this, the hybrid model and it's, it's allowed participation to a huge extent. There's, there is a, a group of our parent community that are still working that I don't have access to or just can't because of the job they have. And so for me, that's my, we need to have hesitancy in, in making it, um, kind of permanent because we will have parents that just are not able to do some jobs that, you know, like our nurses or grocery workers, whatever, they, they don't have the opportunity to do that, so.
So I think, I think we have consensus, Dr. Prater, that the board would support a five o'clock start time for open session through our June meetings, we'll revisit this topic in June, um, which also means our closed session meetings will end at four o'clock.
Will, will begin at four o'clock.
Will begin at four o'clock, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But yeah, one, one more thing, which is a little odd, but I do notice in our meetings that, um, oftentimes staff is there until very late when they're not really needed, when they're, if they're not presenting. And I wonder if they're, if you have the ability to release them if they're not, um, you know, if they're not gonna be contributing to the meeting, I just noticed that they're there until quite late.
Yeah, Marilyn, they really appreciate that comment. Um, but, you know, we do try to, to set them, send them home if they.
Set them free, what are you going to say?
Set them free when they, when they, when they, I don't have, um, uh, an agenda item or even we, um, there are times where we allow them to zoom in. Um, but I do appreciate what you're saying, I've been to many a late board meetings when, you know, that, that has been the case. So I'm conscious of that and, um, you know, I just, I think it's also one of those things that, uh, it's important the board have access to my team, my cabinet team.
Yes, you're right.
Because we don't always know the questions that'll be raised and, and I may not have the answer, but Diane Frost or Rick Mayfield or Leslie O'Connor, Dan Block Mike, so we try to be there for the board. It is the board's meeting in public with the executive team. Now, there are, um, absolute practices that we've built in where I, where I look at the agenda and then I see that I, I don't anticipate any, any questions or, or issues, so I'll, I'll, I'll nod and, and ask them to, to go home, so.
I really appreciate that they're there for us.
Yeah.
After a long workday. I just have noticed that sometimes there's nothing that I can see coming up on the agenda that requires us, you know, a, a certain person or other people to be there and I think, oh.
Yeah, and so if you give me that look, Marilyn, and just nod at me and I remember.
Or I'm the boss and the whole.
To send them home, so.
It's on you, it's on you, Marilyn.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you.
I'll accept that responsibility.
Hold on just a second. I've gotta do something up there before we take it.
Right.
We're gonna break now, hold on just a second.
Well, we have a moment, guys, if I could just ask you a quick question. What are we or how, what precautions are we taking about from Zoom bombers? Just, is every once in a while, it's always awkward when it gets, is, is there a hard stop to that?
Yeah, we have quite the team in the background. Uh, the question, in case you couldn't hear that, Eve, um, what are we doing about Zoom bombers? Which we know is a thing. Uh, there are a few, several precautions we take, um, which is why the links to the Zoom meetings are not activated until the day of. Um, that's one big thing because Zoom bombing, if you post a link early, days early, they share that link across the, the web. And so that's an issue we learned. And so we're growing as we learn, um, we're learning as we move along and, um, about those precautions. Plus, we have the ISNT team in the background, always scanning for, um, individuals that are there to deliberate, deliberately cause mischief. Um, and so we, we're active on that and it's not perfect. Um, sometimes I think we, we're overly cautious, but I think in general, we're able to sustain, um, a fair and appropriate, uh, course of participation without, you know, too much intervention.
Yeah, I think we've been very successful.
Yeah, but kudos to the ISNT team in the background, Manny Dawson, they're, they're pretty amazing in the background. So I think we've, we've created, uh, order and fairness, uh, with, with regard to the hybrid model.
Sure, no, it sounds like we're gonna take a quick break.
We're gonna take a ten minute break.
So can we, when we return, what I would like to ask the board is if it would be okay if the, we were gonna have the students go after my presentation about. So can we, when we return, what I would like to ask the board is if it would be okay if the, we were gonna have the students go after my presentation about climate change? And since they're, they're on board, instead of making them wait?
Sure.
Just if they could share, if we could come, when we grab, we come back while the students share first. If they, if they're able to stay on and watch the rest of your presentation, fantastic. Otherwise, we'll at least let them get back to class and do the things that they need to do.
Yeah, it works for me too.
Thank you. So you guys, Sloha is ready to go.
I.
So we're gonna take, we're gonna take a ten minute break right now and we'll reconvene at eleven twenty-five. So.
We'll start with kids.
We'll, yes, and we'll start with students. So we'll start back in ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. We have a quorum now and let's get started again. Um this is going to be the presentation on our climate wealth, a review of our climate change resolution and updating a discussion. Uh Mr. Pinkerton, I believe that you are leading the conversation.
Yeah, so well, um what I'd like to do, we have a presentation that we're gonna present uh to the board, kind of what, what uh, what we've done since the last time we kind of discussed our climate change uh resolution. But what I'd like to do, if we can, is jump right into the kids. And so what we've asked is each decides uh to let us know kind of what are the environmental efforts, what are the things that you're doing at your school site, clubs, um actions that have happened? And so um if we can, we can start with Low Socials Middle School. And uh I, I think we have some students in, in Mrs. Contreras's office right now. Why don't we uh, why don't we go there? We'll start with you guys and then we'll go to Ben and Eli right after. Is that okay?
Okay, hello. My name's Gabe Pascal. I'm an eighth grader here at Lones. So we've been doing the uh, doing lupin restoration project, which has been taking dune lupin seeds to restore the ocean of dunes. They've been getting blown over by tons of sand that's been eroding and going into the uh, let's say, town. And it's just been blowing over and ruining their air. So we're doing experiments which, where we grind up seeds with, with a bit of sand so that it scarifies them so we can, so they plant more easily and germinate faster. So to do this, we're trying to help the environment by planting these, so to help the sand dunes. Also, around campus, we've, each year, it's a tradition, we plant seeds around where most of the sand places are. So like last year, there was this huge hill that was just covered in sand. Now it's full of succulents, there's a few plants in there. And I think we put more dune lupin around there too. We've also been helping out the bike path and preventing, helping with the bike paths so that nothing gets in the creek. Not the creek, but like, so water flow, so it doesn't get, so it doesn't get into the creeks, so we don't have plastic in the ocean and on the watershed. So we're trying to make sure the ocean stays clean and the watershed is great. Thank you.
Awesome. Question for?
Any questions for Low Socials Middle School? Okay, thanks guys. We may come back for questions in a little bit. Okay, who's next, Mr. Pinkerton?
Ben, Eli. Why don't you guys share your project that you've been, uh, you've been doing. And it's also, uh, is Low Socials Middle Schools correct?
And we're not, we're not.
Ben, we can't hear you.
You guys probably, you guys probably muted.
No, they're not muted anymore. I think maybe just my volume.
Can you see it?
It's not on our end.
It's not on our end?
I don't think so.
Well, let's come, can we come back to, can we come back to you guys?
Can we tell?
Sure. Uh we can jump over to Sloha. We have May and.
We'll come, we'll, we'll come back to you guys, um.
We'll come back to you, Ben. So we have May and Malia and uh they work at San Luis Obispo High School. Um and they're gonna talk about some of their.
I'm just gonna share my screen. Oh.
Yeah.
Just kidding. Screen sharing is disabled, it says.
Hey, uh, May, you'll let you in.
Now you can.
Oh wait, let me, let me give it another go. There it goes. Okay. Oh my god.
Let's do, so I built classrooms in the background.
Yeah, it's not letting me share this screen.
Hey, one second.
You are co-host, so you should be able to share the screen?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, it's making me quit the app. Okay.
Ben, did you want me to do it or do you want May and Malia to do it?
Um, I had a, can you go to the next group and then we'll have her get her screen sharing working. It just wasn't letting her share.
Can you, can you share?
I could, yeah, I can go ahead and share it, Jenny.
Go for it.
Amazing.
Yeah, that would, that would be awesome. Thank you. Yeah, um.
Hey, one second, then we'll get up to the top. Let's give her a sec.
Okay. All right. Um hi. Uh I'm May Ritter and I'm the president of the Environmental Club. And um so as someone who's also very concerned with making our campus a cleaner and more environmentally efficient place, uh I think the best differences that we can make are noticeable and impactful. And so um I've organized and led a few, several lunchtime trash pickups around campus. And uh as of the last trash pickup, my club members have lifted a hundred and ninety-two pounds of trash off campus and over a hundred and fifty disposable masks. Um and if you could change the slide. Um so I asked the members where the highest concentration of trash was found. If you could change the slide again. And it was reliably in the construction areas and the science building, the areas with the lowest concentration of trash cans. And those are the areas found within the circle of the pre-construction photo. So um if you could change the slide again, thank you. Uh over several cleanups from the beginning of the school year till now, I've witnessed firsthand the amount of trash grow. Uh noticing that amount picked up in January and even though the participation for the trash pickup has actually declined, the amount of trash we lift is actually increasing. There's, there's just more trash on campus and um so what do I propose? I think that we just need more trash cans in more optimal areas. Um even temporary trash cans in the more construction impacted areas, I think would make a massive difference. Um and this is important not only for the aesthetic value of a clean campus, but also, if you could change the slide again, the storm drains surrounding our campus uh emptied directly into San Luis Creek, which you can see in this watershed map. Uh and that in turn feeds into Avila Bay, meaning that our environmental impact is not really like constrained to our campus, but can be felt all over San Luis Obispo really. And so um there are case studies all over, when you have successful school-wide waste management, uh like the Berkeley Unified School District successfully diverting fifty-eight percent of their waste from landfills, even though they're facing millions of dollars of budget cuts. And um if you could change the slide again, uh.
May, May?
I also understand that the January implementation of Senate Bill one three eight three, though mostly concerning like food waste and methane emissions and the management of that, uh has given us an increase in recycling and organic waste bins. Uh what I'm mostly concerned about is actually like getting the trash into the bins, which currently is not happening very, like very well. And I think that we can accomplish this by just like increasing the amount of trash cans and optimizing the locations of those cans. So yes, thank you for, for your time.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course.
Um so I know when there are the beach cleanups and things like that, typically, I guess the, it seems like one of the things that's found the most are cigarette butts. Now hopefully, we're not finding cigarette butts. Now hopefully, we're not finding cigarette butts on our campuses. But are you seeing that there are specific, like, there's just a certain kind of garbage that's being left around, like plates, papers, you know? I know masks are not good because they, you know, they get the environment. I know they're bad for birds and other animals. But can you talk, is there anything you're seeing a pattern like that?
Yeah, absolutely. For the first trash pickups, I actually tried to like index the types of trash that we are getting. And predominantly, it is number, the number one is like school lunch trash. So that would be plastic bags from like the little utensil packets. That's a big one. And then the like chocolate milk and orange juice curtains. Those are all over the place. And then number three was masks. There's just disposable masks like everywhere. And they have a tendency to like get tangled and get moved around and like clump up. And so they just make, make really nasty trash. So, yeah, cafeteria food and disposable masks.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was, my question was, was, I wanted to know the indexing, sorting of the trash to see, because part of it is not just getting it in, but reducing them, assuming, right? So it's not even trash itself.
Right, yeah. I think, yeah, that's what I was trying to accomplish with the indexing of the trash, was to see where it was mostly coming from. And I think that that's why I wanna focus on just like increasing the amount of trash cans. Because right now, the places with the largest like trash concentration are the more construction-heavy areas that don't have basically like any trash collection infrastructure, like the upper science building area. The only trash cans that are really accessible are actually inside the buildings. So what happens is as kids leave the buildings, especially after school, they just like accidentally or intentionally litter, especially their masks, or like little trash. And so that's what I mean by like optimizing the locations of the trash cans by putting them next to entrances, exits, and like construction bottlenecks where there's no infrastructure.
I was thinking, it might be difficult to, to reduce some of the trash you're seeing, but I think it's, it's, might be good for us and you to know what, what the largest generators of trash are, because maybe we can go to the source, right? And, and reduce some of the opportunities for those things to be, to be thrown around or, or, you know, tossed away. Because even if they're tossed away, they gotta go somewhere, right?
Um, yeah, definitely. I think that a source of that is mainly the cafeteria, because that's where the most like opportunity for waste is created. And so I think if we look at the things that we are handing out, like for example, something that I notice a lot is we give like plastic utensils in plastic bags, like individually wrapped plastic utensils. And oftentimes, those plastic bags are like a big item that is littered. So maybe like giving out individual spins and forks and the like without having them to be wrapped. Or, yeah, just things like that. Like kind of dissecting the process and seeing what we can do to make it more low-waste.
That'll be part of our presentation, too. I'm sorry, for the trees.
And we have, it looks like LAMs and LOMs.
Yeah, so let's, if we can go back to Eli and Ben now. May, thank you. Let's see if we can hear you guys. Go ahead, Eli.
Yeah.
We got you.
Okay, so our project was, well, when I was in sixth grade, there was a project at our school that you had to come up with something that would make the community like a better place. And so I saw that people were idling their car in front, in the pickup lane. Their cars would idle while they were waiting to pick up their kids. And it's kind of, it's a waste of gas and it pollutes the climate. Because turning off your car, just idling for 10 seconds takes the same amount of gas as turning on your car. And so if you just turn off your car, you could save so much gas and save the climate as well. And so we applied for a grant from NOAA, and we were granted $4,000 to help,
LOMs.
to help put up signs around our school that say like no idling. And so people will know they shouldn't idle and like as kind of telling people not to idle.
So we put together a, so now we're an ocean guardian school. And we have funding. We started a LOMs Climate Action Club. And we started it with funding projects from NOAA and the National Marine Sanctuary Foundation. And LOMs actually received $4,000 two years in a row. And so we did a survey in April of 2021, and 82% of students said that they had heard at least some about global warming. And 94% of students said that they wanted to help reduce global warming. And if we?
Just some easy things that we can do to help with climate, like reduce climate change. You can just not let your car idle as well as putting, just putting kitchen scraps into the green waste bin. There's an anaerobic digester that can turn the kitchen scraps back into energy and it can save energy so that we don't have to burn coal and gas.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead. Thanks for all you're doing. That's, it's pretty exciting stuff. And I will not idle my car anymore. But? Or? Don't be idling, got it. But in San Luis, I've often wondered, do you guys have green waste out in Los Socios there?
Yes.
Yes.
The whole county.
Yeah. It'd be nice if we did in the city of San Luis. Thank you.
And also, 88% of students at LOMs want to divert like lunchtime food into green waste bins instead of the landfill. Because there's not really green waste bins around the quad at school. And so this, the food gets thrown away into trash cans instead of getting, putting in the green waste.
Well, not only that it's not anywhere on the quad. I don't think there's a single one on the entire campus.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we got, let's go to LAMs next. Leslie.
Longbach.
And the student there, you guys will share LAMs?
Hi, thank you for including us. I'm Leslie and this is Dennis Viegas. Hi. So we, we did not present a, any data or a presentation today. We didn't prepare anything to bring in. We, we were just happy to get the invite and to know that this was happening. Even in just the five minutes that we've been in the meeting, I'm already feeling so inspired for ideas for our school site. Dennis and I have been a part of a new club at Laguna that's called Roots and Shoots. And it is actually a club that was started by Jane Goodall. There are hundreds of chapters all around the world in which students are learning community service types of planning skills. And they go into all realms of environment and issues in helping people and animals. And so Dennis and I and various other Laguna students, we had identified recycling on the Laguna campus, so an environment project as our first campaign. And we did a little bit of data collection. So it's been, been a bit of a wonky year, but there was very much interest around campus. So it's just a baby club. We're just getting going. But we did a bit of a data collection like Slow High School did that May and Malia were touching on. And one of our big takeaways was, you know, in Slow, we can only recycle plastics I and II. That is just such a, you know, a small portion of really all of the materials in terms of single-use plastics. So our club, we were really starting to, to focus in on the, the food services, some of their practices. You know, it's like the majority of the materials coming out of the food services are not plastics I and II. From our standpoint, you know, that's, that seems like a no-brainer as a target. And of course, it's more complicated than just setting those parameters of using only recyclable materials and, and reusable. You know, there's a lot more going into it. But that was our first campaign, was starting to tackle even just the, what is recyclable at Laguna? They make these, you know, amazing, beautiful foods coming out of the cafeteria. Smoothies every day, these large smoothie cups. It's like a pint-sized smoothie that are recyclable, but our break is not long enough to eat the, for the kids to drink the whole smoothie. And then they put, and then they throw it in the trash. So, you know, there's a lot of work to be done of even simply sorting trash properly. But Roots and Shoots are nascent club, as, as I call it, just starting out. You know, we're, we are also very much interested in the, the sorting of recycling and waste. And, yeah, we'll continue on our work.
A while ago, we went on a debt collecting thing, and we discovered that a lot of the recycling stuff, people just either A, they throw a, something completely dirty that can't be used for recycling into a recycling bin, or B, they just use the recycling bin as a secondary trash can. And on very few instances did we see a recycling bin that didn't have at least some garbage in it. And we found a bunch of recyclables in the trash, mostly because there's not many signs around that are saying like, what's recyclable, what's not, is what I would say. I would say that if we were to, if we were to get more like recycling, we would need signs to inform the students. Like, not many people know whether or not a bottle is recyclable off the top of their head.
Outreach and signage, those were some of our next steps. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. So for the board's sake, we'll, before we go to the?
Uh, May has a question.
Yeah, May, let me, let me say one thing real quick and we'll go to you, okay? So I just wanted to, for the board's sake, I wanted to highlight the board that we have Jordan Bauer here tonight, or today, I should say. And Jordan was key in really bringing the first resolution to the board. And so I'm super, you know, happy she can make it to, to, to kind of, you know, see what's happening, right? And the fact that we're, we're still having the conversation, Jordan. Like, this is still something that we're focused on. And, you know, it, it hopefully makes you feel really good that kids, right, are leading some of these efforts around our school. Because ultimately, for me, that's the part that's awesome, is, is having the students, right, take this as a priority and kind of lead in those things. We're gonna talk about what the district's doing next. But really, I think the efforts of the kids, you know, is, is a good highlight for us to know that this is something that, that students care about and if there's ways we can support them. And the things that they're talking about today, we're more than how can you do that.
Can I ask Jordan a question? Hey, Jordan, can I ask, may I ask you a question?
Yeah, thank you for including me in this. It's been really great just to hear about everything that they're all doing. It's really inspiring.
So, Jordan, I'm curious, where, where, where are you, where are you right now? I'm assuming you're going to school? And how do you think what you did at San Luis Obispo High School has helped what you're doing at school and what your future plans are?
So I'm at San Jose State University, and I'm majoring in environmental science. And I was able to intern for State Senator John Laird, just having like experience in passing something. And having that background really helped. And I'm hopefully going into environmental consulting. I've been interning at a place, but it's just been, I got like a lot of experience with, I'm passing something and getting involved with leaders and stuff. So I just thank you guys a lot for everything.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all the work you did and for really encouraging us and spurring us on toward this climate change and resolution that we did a couple of years ago. Thanks.
Thank you for everything you're all doing.
I think May's up.
Okay, May, did you have a question?
Um, so I just wanted to speak on something real quick. My name's Malia Mayer, and I'm a student athlete on campus. And I wanted to talk about like possibly making environmental science, like have some sort of like green club elective. Because as a student athlete, I spend a lot of my outside-of-school time with like sports and stuff. So it makes it really hard to be part of a club with like at-lunch meetings and like out-of-school activities. Because like our time is so caught up. I'm also like, I have a job, I'm a student, and I'm an athlete. And so my time is very much like consumed by all of that. So I wanted to propose an idea from the perspective of someone who doesn't have a lot of outside time to make like some sort of like green club and some sort of like garden club that we can like, but have it be an elective that we can have on campus. I know that Pacific Beach, they have students who participate in a program that combines like instruction with several academic subjects, such as like plant biology and anatomy and math, English economics, all sorts of sciences, while at the same time, like growing eating and selling organic foods that they make on campus. And I wanted to sort of implement something like that to the Slow High campus so that people like me can still be a part of this change that we all want to see on campus. Because not only is it good for like aesthetics with like making our campus like green and good, but it also helps like support like air quality and helps us learn how to plant things in a sustainable way. And so I wanted to propose this idea to make it an elective so that people like me can still be a part of it at school without having to devote a lot of time outside of school to it.
But Dr. Ritter, do you wanna talk about the process for class, for how we develop new classes at the high schools? And what, or how she can bring this forward to the high school administration?
And Mr. Dickinson's on the line. So he's, he's here in the Zoom meeting, the principal of Slow High, so.
Yeah, Malia, hi.
I just heard that.
Uh, this is Dr. Prater. I'm the superintendent. And it's really good to hear both, both of you, you and May, speak. I love your idea of developing some sort of elective for those students who want to do these things but are, like you, tied to a very short amount of time in your life with regard to sports and other commitments, jobs, and so forth. I love the idea tying it to our, our mission as a district to make the world a better place. It makes sense. So in talking about how we create these courses, it, it begins with these types of suggestions. And we elevate that up to Mr. Dickinson and Mr. O'Conner, Mrs. Frost, who work as the director secondary as well as the assistant soup. Our board policy allows us to make these suggestions and then see if there's existing, existing programs that actually match that. And Mrs. Frost, do you wanna, you wanna provide a little more detail than I just did on the course development idea?
Actually, I think you hit it right on. We do develop courses. It does involve our secondary director, Leslie O'Connell, but, oh, Connor, excuse me, but also our high school principal. So with Mr. Dickinson being here and hearing this feedback, I think that kind of starts a strong path.
And if I could just add one thing, you know, I think Ms. McCartney is, she might be on this call. She might not?
She just left.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm happy to work with her and, and obviously our students about this. I think one thing we all believe is we want rich applications of the learning that we're doing. And so what you're talking about is how do we make actionable these things that we're learning and make a difference in our world and community? And so that's awesome, you know? So that's a great conversation for us to be having as a school. So thanks for that.
Dr. Prater?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dickinson. I so appreciate that. And what I will, as a, as a link to this conversation, I wanted to let the board know that Morro Bay High School isn't here today. But it's not because they're not interested in this topic. They actually have the students that are active on their campus are actually?
They actually have, um, the students that are active on their campus are actually in the AP Environmental Science course. And, uh, that the board approved last year. And so at Morro Bay High School, we asked them to participate. Well, the students that would participate are actually debating today inside their AP Environmental Science class, um, around things that, um, that they need to do on the campus, in the community and across the state, uh, producing and debating ideas that are practical, cost effective, um, and are perhaps the low hanging fruit for our district. They wanted me to tell you that, that they, they don't want this to, their, their absence today to be misconstrued as a lack of interest. But I do want to say kudos to the board for approving that AP Environmental Science course. Now, to Malia's, uh, point, that's, uh, we also, um, would be interested in an elective as opposed to an AP, you know, core course. Um, an elective that could enhance the work that those, um, courses already support. Could, could really round this out and, and build a culture at the schools that, um, have a whole group of kids that may not have the option to go after school in a club, but rather in the day that would enhance the school site, but align it to the standards that are, that drive us as well. So, um, it needs to have high expectations, it needs to have high interest. And, um, I think all those things can come together here. So, great idea.
They also have a sustainability commissioner at Slow High who's taking a final right now, who, who wasn't able to come on. Um, so there's, you know, variety of other students, right, that are involved. Unlike the lead for the charter, we have, uh, Ms. McCartney here who's, uh, one of the advisors and, and teachers. And then we'll, we'll go back to Eli and Ben.
Hi, um, thanks for having me here. Um, and the students at San Luis High are, are here and they have just finished their second period finals. So I want to give a shout out to them because they're all here right after taking their finals. And those that you've heard speak so far from San Luis High, and there are some others that might, um, ask to speak after your presentation, Mr. Pinkerton, um, are actually in environmental science this year. They just finished the second trimester. Um, it's a dual enrollment course offered here that they get quest of college credit as well. And one of the things that I hear them say a lot is, um, to echo what Dr. Prater said, is having like another opportunity after taking the class to put into action the things that they've learned and have begun to value and become aware of. And so it's interesting, I'm so glad and grateful that they have the opportunity to share their thoughts and observations as a student, um, perspective. And after you, um, make your presentation, I do have somebody that, uh, took notes with the sustainability chair from ASP that can share some insights as well.
A lot of energy there. Yeah.
Eli and Ben had another.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, please. Eli and Ben?
My name is Sarah, um, I'm Eli and Ben's mom and have been kind of in the background helping with the grant writing part of things. And when, when you mentioned, um, students looking for opportunities to contribute to solving problems that, that feel overwhelming, one of the things that, um, we've been having some success with at Los Osos Middle School is teachers who are interested, particularly the, um, digital design teachers have been, um, interested in the idea of having some of the projects that they would already be assigning to their students, um, be related to sort of climate action signs or the kinds of, of, uh, outreach that could be done in an after school club. But to, to sort of infiltrate into typical classes and, um, overlap with time students are already spending feels like an efficient use of, uh, of student time. And another way is the students have been, um, producing some lion's roar, their student, uh, newscast program focusing on climate action topics, um, as a way of, of sort of having time that students are spending serve double duty in learning new skills, but also, uh, working to solve climate problems.
Right, so I think we, we may have some more, uh, as Ms. McCartney said, come on afterwards, some students who want to share after the presentation. But, uh, I, I think for me, when I hear the kids, when I go through this, you know, there's things that the district can do that size in, that are, you know, trash cans here and there, those types of things, right? Um, you know, we can work with food service, I don't know what they can offer, we'll talk a little bit about that. But at the end of the day, really the power of kids talking to other kids and influencing kids to put the right recycling in the right, you know, container, those types of things. Um, I, I think is soon, is, is a huge part of this, right? Is having the kids lead the effort. And so love to see the kids today, the things that they're trying to implement and, and move forward with. Because I think they, you know, kids can have a lot, a lot of times a, a greater effect on other students, right? In terms of what they do, uh, by their actions. So I, I want to thank all the, all the students that were able to come today. Um, if you can stay on and listen to the presentation, share information afterwards, fantastic, great. If you need to get back to school, to class, we totally understand. Um, so with that, if it's okay, I'll pull up the presentation that we kind of put together, um.
Thank you, thank you.
And so the, the first one, and again, I wanted to, you know, Jordan Bauer and, uh, and, and students a few years ago kind of pushed a, uh, you know, pushed forward a, a resolution for the board that really talked about the climate and, um, you know, things that, that we should look at do, you know, doing as a school district, right? To, uh, to get in front of this effort. And so, you know, climate change over the past four or five years, even, you know, it, it was a, a big conversation then, but even more so today, I would even say, right? Than even it was when, when kind of Jordan brought this forward. And so, um, and, and so some of those things, kind of key things that, that came out of that resolution. Um, number one was really looking at, you know, as we put in new buildings, as we modernize our facilities, right? Uh, when, when at all possible, using environmentally sensitive building materials. Um, is really look, looking at ways that we could, um, you know, resources and, and be more efficient, right? Uh, as we move forward with, you know, whether it's, you know, energy, um, you know, electricity, water, gas, those types of things were, were key efforts. Um, the next one was to continue, uh, collaboration efforts with, with our cities, our county offices, right? Our other agencies, um, and looking at, you know, safer routes to schools, uh, getting more students to walk to school, right? So those efforts as well, right, uh, you know, less cars on the road. Um, also discussed, talk, you know, talked about piloting, you know, exemplar programs at, at all levels. Um, for recycling, composting, we'll talk a little bit about that. There's been a recent legislation that's gone into effect that's increased that, um, in all of our school sites and, and that got started just this year. Um, so we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, again, continued, uh, you know, evaluation sustainability efforts, uh, in terms of the school lunch program. Um, that is, uh, you know, we'll talk a, a little bit, we have a slide about it. The, the pandemic actually grew our relationships with local vendors, um, and, and that helped a ton. Um, but there's a lot of restrictions too that go into, um, serving food. So we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, we, again, have, have really tried getting kids involved, parents involved. And so school gardens have grown at each of our sites, hands on learning experience uh, that many of the students talked about today, you know, being able to promote that. Um, and then lastly, um, you know, the curricular piece, right? So like Dr. Prater said, adding the AP Environmental Science in Morro Bay High School. We do have environmental science at San Luis Smith High School. Uh, but one of the other ways that we, you know, can push this idea, these thoughts, um, across the curriculum as well, we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Um, so, so again, kind of to, to first to start off, right? So 2020 was the last time we kind of brought this to the board, we discussed it and, and we looked at what are the things we're doing? Um, at that point, and so in 2020, we had this zero net energy product or project, I should say, at Los Osos Middle School. Um, you know, we have our solar projects at, at Looms, Lambs, um, Slow High, Morro Bay. I do believe that if we have another bonds effort in this area, that would be something to continue to look at and increasing our solar, uh, footprint, uh, uh, across the district. Um, we, we had an entire Prop 39 LED lighting, uh, upgrades throughout all of our school sites, right? Um, and there's grants that, that paid for that to happen as well as, uh, we finished those projects with some of our measured funds. Um, we, we had a, as part of the Prop 39, we had, um, a consultant come in, looked at all of our energy monitoring. Um, and that'll be something we should probably have her come back and kind of do, uh, you know, a few years later. Um, you know, where are we at in terms of, of that? Uh, again, with all of our new construction, you know, there's new guidelines in terms of climate, Title 24, uh, efficiency, energy efficiency, in particular with roofs. Um, and, and, uh, and so all of those things are being, you know, put in place with all of our new, um, and, and to modernized roofs and buildings across the district. Uh, the board voted for us to no longer use Roundup, uh, weed killer, right? So that's something that the ground staff has, um, has taken on. And, and so a lot more manpower is needed, right, in, in terms of those efforts. But also, uh, Mr. Bonin in particular has led an effort to, um, kind of change uh, some of our, you know, the types of landscaping we use, which I'll have him touch base on. And then lastly, of course, stormwater prevention plans, you know, as we've done construction across the sites. But I'm going to have him talk a little bit about kind of, okay, so, um, over the past two years, what are some additional things that we have, uh, you know, accomplished or where are we at today?
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Uh, starting with, uh, Title 24 and our construction, like Ryan touched base on, a lot of it is focused on roofs and saving energy and insulation. So as you see a lot of the new construction buildings, the roofs are light, they're white usually, which reflects heat. And then there's usually insulation between underneath the roof, which is much thicker than it used to be. So that helps on energy, right? And then on top of that, with all the HVAC units that go in now, they're, they're, you're saving 50% more energy now on energy consumption because they're so efficient. So that's huge, right? Uh, lights again, you know, as we, like the stadium lights that we're putting in down there, those are all LED. Those are saving 75% energy. So it's huge savings overall. Um, also as we move forward, you know, um, you go down through here, you know, for grounds, like I said, we're doing, you know, automation wise, we, we have all these irrigation controls that are pretty, pretty computerized with, uh, soil sensors, so we're not water overwired, you know, or underwatering. And it's, it's a balance, it's, you know, it's computers and you don't put in the right spot. You know, so it's all, we're always messing with it. But we've also put in, you know, um, water sensors. So if the water break, our main valve will automatically shut off. Now, I'll give you an example on Baywood, we got a notice that there was a break in the water line, uh, Sunday evening. And we show up first thing in the morning and the site's like, well, why are you here? Well, what happened, one of the parents decided they want to cut into our irrigation for the garden. And we detected a break, so it shut the system down. So we showed up before they even knew they had a break and saved water from running all night, right? So, so we also caught them doing something they shouldn't be doing. So it worked in both ways, it, it did what it was supposed to do, which is fantastic. Uh, and as we move forward to the, the rocks, right? The rocks, uh, is a couple of different things. We don't have to replace with wood chips, right? Rocks will last forever. It's also helpful with weeding, because we did wood chips, that breaks down, then weeds grow even more. This way with weeds that do grow between the rocks, ground department loves it. They just go out, pick them real easy, they're done in ten, fifteen minutes on, on this area. So that's, that's combating not using Roundup, right?
So for the people in the audience, we, we basically doing a lot of, um, low maintenance, you know, very little water usage, um, landscaping, uh, mainly around our school sites now. Um, so you'll see as you go in front of Morro Bay High School, uh, you know, the theater area, um, behind Slow High School. Up here at the district office, you'll see rock landscapes with plants. So it looks beautiful, but, um, from a, a maintenance standpoint, don't need to use Roundup. Those types of things has been, um, been very helpful, I think. And, and we've continued that effort, um, as, as we go around and, and kind of fix up our sites. Mr. Bonin, that we're planting drought tolerant plants?
There is, yes, not exactly everywhere, but we're, we're using, we're using.
As much as we're able?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, thanks. So Chris, we had this discussion in private or, or at a board meeting, but so I, when I visited Morro Bay during construction, it looked like they were putting in some lawns. I went over the other day to see, um, Macbeth, uh, and I was surprised that there were more lawns than I thought. So, and when we talk with the architects, so we're going to be hopefully doing some modernization at the elementary schools. When we talk with the architects, is it now on our checklist of, of when we talk to an architect, that they know that we have this climate change resolution and we're going to?
That would be part of our discussion.
Correct, okay, Chris, yeah.
And like for Morro Bay, we go back, when we were doing the student services building, we actually added all that rock to come back on, on grass space. So we, we took that into account and even when we got out into the quad, if you notice, there's some grass because the kids like to sit on it too, so can't take it all away, make it concrete jungle.
Right.
And, but there is a lot of rock, a lot of rock, a lot of plants that fill those spaces too, right? So it's, it's, it's a balance in there too.
So, and just.
Cause I, I mean, I drive like even down here, they're, they're sitting on the lawns. Every, every time I go to Morro Bay, they're out there sitting when you first drive in that nice big lawn. I see them sitting out there all the time too, so.
Yeah.
And they'd rather sit on the grass than pick at tables at times too.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that. And when I was, when I was at the U of A, uh, in Arizona, the, the university had some wells that, they flooded their campus and they had lawns, but the public school system did not. And, you know, I got it and, and growing up in New York City, we, we had broken asphalt. So I think it's great that we're making it nice for them. Um, I just, I just, the board has adopted this climate change resolution, the students have spoke. Um, so just again, I think it's gotta be really clear to the construction or the construction management companies and the architects that this is, this is really high on, on the board's list of.
For sure. I'm sure we can communicate.
I totally appreciate it.
I'm, I'm wondering, Mr. Bonin, at Morro Bay High School, I know that we have a well out there. I don't know if it's, um, potable water or not, I think it's non-potable water.
We share that with the city too.
That well?
So that's monitored by the city. So there's times where they, they turn it off and we're forced to use city water. So right now, I believe it is actually shut off because it's actually low, right now. Uh, and, you know, when it's that low, they just shut us off when we go to city.
So in good times, we would be using that well water for our irrigation?
Yes.
And is that drinking water or non-potable water, do you know? Non-hub, non-hub.
But as I understand it, it may get cleaned by the city somewhere. So the city of Morro Bay, for example, gets something like 90 or below, 90% of the work from the state water system. And the state water system is your cut, its allocation to everybody by about 90 something percent. So while sometimes we have lots of water, a lot of times we don't in this area. And we're living in what's called a high desert. So we just need, um, yeah, we just need to be aware of that.
Yeah, and so you, you notice when you drive in, I'll use Morro Bay for example, we had a lot of plants and everything around the solar, uh, canopies, like those, we print those into rocks.
Right.
So we take that stuff out and put rocks there in the, in this place. So as we go through sites and, you know, we're not doing it all at once, but hey, there's a break over there. Now there's a break, this is a good time to put rocks back. Mission Peak's another good one. When you look, uh, when you go over there, we've added rocks around a few trees in the planters. And towards the end over by the MPR, there's rocks, you know, around the trees. So all that cuts back on water use, you know, the rocks keep moisture in too, so that helps. The other thing we're also moving towards is electric, right? I ordered an electric riding mower. So, uh, that is, it's going to be quieter, there's no, no gas. And we can mow them all day around the classrooms and not have to schedule, you know, cause teachers are teaching, we don't want to interrupt their class. So that's our next, next push, right? The big commercial ones aren't out there yet, but we're going to try, try a smaller one, see if it works. Uh, the other piece we're doing is, uh, electric blowers. Again, quieter, because I've gotten complaints from neighbors when we're out here, especially up here, blowing too early. That's too loud. So the electric blowers are going to be a lot quieter. And then, uh, weed, weed trimmers, same thing, battery pack. So we're moving towards those pieces as far as like grounds is a good one because they're out there every day, right? Uh, we'll get there, but I might as well jump ahead, the transportation piece. You know, I've been looking at electric vehicles and we got an electric bus. Is it all right to jump, jump ahead?
Yeah, be- before we jump into that, so again, part of this too, for us as a school district is we're waiting for technology to catch up, right? So it's not that we, we're not interested in having electric buses or moving in this direction, but they also have to work, they have to meet the needs of our sites, right? So I can't use a weed what, you know, weed where that the battery runs out in five minutes and then it, you know, you, you have to wait to charge it for 24 hours. So, you know, those are the types of things that we're finally seeing that, okay. like, hey, this might actually work now. We could use these these, you know, electric vehicles, these trucks, these buses, these mowers, um, you know, this different types of equipment. Actually, the batteries are a lot lasting longer now. And again, when we talk about the batteries too, and I'm sure that Jordan and other people could tell you, you know, it's not, it's not cost neutral for the environment, right? Batteries have an effect. So, um, you know, it's looking at all those aspects as we we move forward, right? To kind of meet the needs of of where we're at, but.
And I I was.
Another piece on the the battery piece is is finally getting systems that they're interchangeable from the weed weed trimmer to the blower to the actual mower. Instead, the mower will actually take two batteries instead of one, right? Like makes it simplified for us, instead of having all these different types of batteries, different chargers, so we can use our batteries efficiently.
So I I will, I I was really excited when we put the solar in. Actually, I was kind of skeptical of it. And what what we were told by, I think, the company that was putting it in is, and what and my staff is this is, it's kind of nice when the school district takes the lead on stuff and and shows that it can work. And other public agencies take the lead on it and show. So I'm excited that we're there um with the solar stuff. And I'm excited that we're, that what you're doing, Chris. I mean, it's just, it's good for us to be upfront. It's kind of like a lesson for everybody.
So Chris, why don't you show the transportation twenty-two?
So uh, transportation wise, right? Um, I applied for electric, uh, a grant for electric bus and we got it. So then that led into infrastructure for this electric bus, right? So we went out for another grant and we got that grant. We and we've been signed off by P G D. And to give you some numbers, the electric bus is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, so four hundred thousand dollars just for the bus.
So the sixty-six thousand bucks?
Eighty-four, eighty-four. And then for the infrastructure, just to just to get the power to the builders, another hundred thousand dollars. So half a million dollars just for one bus. But we got the upgraded charger, so if we get another bus, you know, we we were up to two other buses on the same charging system. So that's good. Uh, and this will allow us to test it, right? It it won't, it won't go long distance because you can't go to Bayfield and back, it won't last that long. But there's no reason why we can't go to Morro Bay and back and around the city. And that that's where I really want to see it. We'll have a mixed fleet most likely, right? So um, but the technology's starting, starting to catch up, like Ryan said. We've been waiting for technology to catch up. Uh, I've been looking into electric vans and electric pickups. Because I believe our maintenance fleet, you know, grounds and maintenance, that's perfect, right? If we can get an electric pickup, they just plug in at night and come back next day, it was charged. They're not gonna go over three hundred miles in a day. If they are, then I can find out where to go. So um, but that that's good. But the only problem with that now is that lead times, you can't get an electric pickup for a year, right? Uh, vans, van is another good one, I think we need to push, but right now, those costs are still too high. They're a hundred and forty thousand dollars just for a van, when I go buy one, it's forty-five thousand, right? So those, they haven't caught up in price wise, you know? Um, but eventually, we'll 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 get the early prices come down, right? But the stuff I just keep watching and and like the bus, I wasn't wasn't on board a couple of years ago, but now technology's catching up, so and we got the grant, so why not?
So I'm just, yeah, okay, sorry. So um, you're talking about the charging and the and the battery charging and we have the solar panels at the schools. I'm wondering, um, I have a friend with, I think, two trip plugging cars. Is is Eve's car plug, Eve, is your car plug-in?
Yes.
Okay, so and so we're seeing more and more plug-in vehicles. Are those solar panels, is there, or is there, can we put in charging systems for not too much at the at the school sites for parents, students and staff?
So this has come up, right? Uh, right now, it's about which charging unit that's gonna be standardized, right? They're all a little bit different. And then who's gonna maintain it because there's grants out there and companies want to come in and put chargers. So there's still a lot of, I haven't gone completely down that road just yet, but I'm not, I'm gonna say we're not going to, right? I think at some point, we will be putting chargers around, especially when we get our own fleet too, you know? We start having our uh tech cars, you know, they would swap those out with electric. Then, yeah, it makes sense to have charging stations around here. And like for B G and T, when eventually we'll get solar down there too. It'll be a shade for the buses, but solar for all our battery powered vehicles. So it it's coming.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, this, those are things too, that hopefully there'll be state or federal grants to do that, right? Because again, like every, it's a cost. And then we're giving our electricity away as a school district, right? Because people are plugging in, those types of things. So it would be nice if there were state programs, things like that, that we reverse you, right? For having these and so those are things that it it's starting to expand. You see, you start to, you know, we're starting to see it, right? There's those charging stations everywhere, those types of things, you know? You go to Target, they have them out, you know, there's there's, there's a lot more. So I would assume that that's a technology, hopefully, that as they sell more electric cars, that it's gonna become widely available for us. Um, you know, we have seen a huge increase of kids riding their bikes to school. I would say in particular at San Luis Obispo High School. I mean, just a ton of kids ride their bikes. So it's fantastic, right? It's great. Um, so we've had a lot of additional bike racks, you know, on the campus um to to help with that along with all of our school sites, right? And you know, and so, um, you know, we do have our safer out to schools in 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 the county here. They do a lot of work, they put out a lot of surveys, they do projects with school sites. Um, right now, there's a bike path that they're they're uh looking at putting in throughout uh throughout Shell Beach. And of course, in San Luis Obispo community, you know, bikes are huge. It it seems like everywhere there's a new bike path going in, right? To make it safer for kids and and for the community. So hopefully, that's something that will, again, I think will continue to grow.
We have our bike path here at the district office, right? So when people come in, it's safer too, gives them direct access down to San Luis Island. Right?
I just, yeah, all right. It it makes me smile to think about that. It's been eight years since we banned this board, banned Roundup. And uh, and I, just the other day, I was, I was walking by Slow High School on San Luis Drive. There was a grounds keeper um manually digging up the weeds, you know? And I just was like, thank you. That is a, that we've really come a long way to track with that.
It's a, it's a big effort, for sure. Um, so again, from a water, gas, electric, trash, I do think that uh there's room for us to grow in terms of solar. And so and uh and prices come down substantially for that. So that's something that we'll, you know, we'll need to implement and tie into our facility master plan and look at those things as we move forward. Uh, but there was new law.
So see, I think one of the most important things about the solar panels is when we're able to get solar or when we're able to get battery backup systems, you know, efficient, cost-effective battery backup systems. That's gonna make a huge difference as a goal for actually, you know, our community.
So we heard from some of the kids today that there's still a need to look at, you know, overall trash cans and use of the types of cans. So Mr. Bonin was, I saw him taking notes over there. So he's uh, he he listened to those comments from the students, so we'll follow up on that um after after our meeting today. But there there are some new legislation that came into being. And so, um, Mr. Bonin, you wanna talk a little bit about recycling and and trash?
So that being said, you know, the the new regulations are mandated us to have uh green bins, the recycle bins at sites. So uh, our David Rodriguez, our operations supervisor, headed that charge up this summer. And earlier this year, getting everything out to the sites that they have. So as I was, I was listening to the students, I'm texting him, asking, you know, hey, does does Lones have their green bin? And they do, it's just down at the garden. So that being said, well, what that tells me is I need to go to the sites with them and make sure that we have, have them in places that they they can use them, right? So they have them on sites, might not be the right place. And and then as as I was here, a lot of it too is gonna be education. Because once they throw stuff in a recycle bin that's shouldn't be there, then we we got to throw the whole thing out. So and I see that constantly and I hear that constantly. But I mean, education and and as far as our, you know, blue bins, we we got grants from locally to to have the blue bins at in classrooms, make sure they have the recycle bins in the classrooms. A lot of the trash trash bins, I know all my office, all the sites have them. Yeah.
And so a lot of composting happening as well now at sites. So they do a lot of composting at uh at Laguna Middle School, where we have a separate kitchen for the most part. There's actually other school sites, a lot of composting, you know, nine of our ten schools, elementary schools have school gardens, right? Um, and so, you know, those are, you know, things that definitely the green waste part of it is, it's something that, you know, they're working on, kids are talking about, you know, in terms of moving forward. But, you know, do we need to continue to work on that and use it? I mean, I was, I filled in for a a, one of our food service people recently and and uh and and, yeah, they had, you know, the the uh new duty people there with the kids coming in. They had three different trash cans as the kids were throwing their things away, they were directing them, had the signage. So I know that we're, we're moving in the right direction in terms of that. But at the end of the day, there's not gonna be enough adults on campus to, you know, observe every kid and what they throw away and what they don't. So I think that student part in this and those, our kids and and hearing from them today and having them help us with that messaging, um, to me, will, that's a, will be a big piece of of really making this work, right, at our school sites. Uh, and kind of moving forward. But definitely, you know, again, this is just this year, a lot of this new recycling, green waste, you know, putting these things in, new legislation that started up. And so it's it's really amazing that we didn't have a really good recycling program at all at most of our schools, you know, in the past. And so this kind of forced the issue with us, which is great, right? So um now it's, it sounds like we just need to do some communication, follow up with schools and and with kids about where our things are at. Um, so food service, I talked a little bit about to start, um, you know, Erin Primer, our food service uh workers, uh, really through COVID, when we were doing our pantry boxes, it really tied into um her working directly with our local farmers, our local um produce, right, our local farms. Um, and so twofold with that. One, she was using a lot of um, you know, a lot of vendors, a lot of farms locally. So there's not like the shipping that happens, right? That you're not having to order things from Pennsylvania or Florida or other places. So we were, you know, using the local farmer. So that was, and and it was interesting because we had um, we had a congressman here who was visiting the program and that was kind of a a big piece, right, to share with him because climate's a big issue. And so for him to realize, hey, the more they can allow us to use local vendors and tie into local vendors, that really helps the client, right? Because of the transportation costs that go into it. Um, and so and and she has done a wonderful job, right? With Cal Poly tying in, using a lot of our 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 local produce and and those types of things. Um, we have, you know, she is introducing plant-based meal options for kids throughout. We have vegetarian options, right? So I think that's another thing that's very, you know, in terms of environmentally friendly, um, as we move forward. Uh, you know, again, the the program itself was was recognized recently by the School Board Association, right? Golden Bell as well as an Ag Award um for Farm to Table. Um, I will say there are some issues with food service. And some of that was tied in with COVID. Because there's the the packaging, the the need to not have people touch things or be able to touch things. And so, um, you know, hopefully, as we move into the future, some of those restrictions will go away, which will, you know, can you have a, can you have just a box of forks out where somebody takes one fork versus having to have the plastic container where everything is lined up, right? So, um, you know, some of those types of things, you know, we can work with Erin and talk to her about, but some of those re- again, restrictions. Um, the other thing that is a is a tough one is um, they, in this kind of Obama administration, they became really strict about the serving sizes of of food. And so whereas in the past, you could just have a, a, you know, a big container of pasta and kids would go in with their spoon and we'd get pasta and then they would go, they would get sauce, they'd put it on and they'd make their plate as they went through. Well, now, it it's super regular, they they can only have a certain serving size. And so what happens with that is that then made us have to, all of a sudden, we're using plastics. We're having to package everything, we're having to, you know, do those things. So, um, you know, that's something, and again, I think with Erin, she's super, you know, tied into limiting as much of that as very environmentally friendly in terms of her practices. So um, I'll 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 be talking to her with, you know, about those things. It's great to hear from the kids about what they're seeing at their site, in particular with those, you know? So if there's anything we can do with the the types of recyclable materials they're using, four forks and, uh, you know, straws and and again, we're seeing triple the number of kids eating on campus because of free meals for all, right? So you're you're seeing a lot more, you know, kids eating, a lot more probably waste, trash, those types of things. So definitely something we can, you know, focus in on with her and with the students in trying to work on, um, you know, limiting those, you know, those types of things.
I have a question about that, though.
Yeah.
Does it have to be plastic? Couldn't it be the the reconstituted kind of paper, biologicals that we?
They they can, they can.
There's also supply issues.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Some of you notice, you know, some grocery stores, their bags are always changing because they can't get their normal oil supply. We're seeing that across the board, not with just food service, construction, you know, materials and everything. So that, that could be part of it.
And 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 cost.
And cost, yes.
So remember, all the things we talked about, right? There's a cost associated with that. So the types of materials you use, the types of fork you buy, the types of, you know, all of that. So she factors, you know, all of that gets factored in, right? And so again, climate needs to be one of the considerations. It's not just money, it's also climate, it's also what, you know, the effect that it's having, right? But realize, I mean, just like Mr. Bonin said, I could go buy a new van for Slow High to use and I could spend forty-five thousand dollars to get a van that's gas powered, or I could spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an electric van. And and so it it's that balance point, right? And so when you're buying things on such grand scale, like food service, where we're literally feeding four thousand students a day, right? Those types of things, you know, it 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 can quickly add up in terms of the the types of materials you're using, how you're using them, those types of things. So I just, you know, it it's all part of the conversation, basically. Um, you know, construction, you know, curriculum instruction, we talked a little bit about, you know, the AP Environmental Science class. Um, we do have the Environmental Science class at San Luis Obispo High School, which is, uh, like Mr. McCarthy said, you know, that's a dual enrollment class for the students. Um, if they complete it, they go on to Questa, right? They can, I believe, take the class there and they get the college units for that class, right? So it's kind of a double um class for them. So which is, you know, pretty much the same thing as taking Environmental Science AP and passing the AP test. You get those college units for that, right? Um, like again, nine out of ten elementary campuses have school gardens. BP would be the one left out at this point, so we'll have to give them a hard time. And I'll have to talk to Diana Jones and.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, good, good.
Um, and then, and then of course, uh, you know, with our um, with our foundation, one of our grants, right, was to bring in uh this kind of an environmental uh curriculum instruction uh that tied into called Trump, Trump in the classroom, right? So um, there's actually a link on here that kind of discusses that. But it's basically throughout our third grades, um, you know, kind of bringing that environmental, you know, kind of where they they talk about Trump in the classroom, um, the curriculum associated with that. So just kind of teaching students the effects, uh, you know, of our environment, what happens, right? And uh, in in really, really.
Whoa, sorry.
Trying to uh, trying to to build that instructional piece. Again, we already have a lot of things that even some of the students said, right? We have a exceptional program at Pacific Beach High School, right, that has continued uh where the kids, you know, still work the farm there. Um, happy to know that that was actually an area that I think is not gonna be developed in in that area. So that that hopefully will continue into the future. Um, and again, we have fantastic, you know, Ag FFA programs at both comprehensive high schools, right? Um, you know, from a campus club perspective, there are some clubs on campus. Uh, but that that's probably something that we could promote more of and and kind of focus on, right? So I know Morro Bay High School, like their environmental club is actually their their class. So is that really expanding it out more to kids, right, those types of things? So, you know, those are things that we should uh continue to work on and and we can, you know, work with Diane Frost and um with Leslie O'Connor in in spreading those. But have a a great relationship with uh One Cool Earth, right? I believe um, uh, Baywood actually has them coming in to enhance their school garden, that that's their currently, right? So a a lot of efforts happening in, from a composting, school garden, you know, kind of 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 focus. Um, I think this is the last slide, uh, which basically talks also about technology. And so, um, you know, a lot of e-waste, a lot of things that are tied to, uh, you know, the climate and technology. And so we we just started our e-waste program. Um, and so with the help of Jeremy Kalish and the I T department, right, kind of putting this together. So we now collect e-waste throughout the district, right? Um, we have.
I I can speak for some of them.
Yeah, go ahead.
So now we have a vendor that we work with. And what we do is he gives us big boxes to put e-waste in. And when we get, you know, six, seven boxes, they actually come with a semi and take it all and then give us empty boxes again. So we work with, uh, techno- the tech department and, you know, they take out what they want, destroy the drives and then they give it to us. So, uh, this vendor, you know, is responsibly recycling computers and not just dumping them in a landfill, right? So it's all documented to make sure it goes to official recycling center.
That's true.
And I think one of the, um, you know, one of the, the positive things that happens when we spend money on new equipment, new HVAC, as Mr. Bonnet said, new water heater, you know, so also with technology, right? So, um, you, you get a substantial amount of energy savings when you put these new, you know, new technologies in, right? So, um, you have Jeremy listed a couple here in terms of things that they've started doing, but, but literally like, you know, half the amount of energy in running equipment that in our service run twenty-four hours a day, so, you know, thirty, three hundred sixty-five days a year. So this is, it, it, it can become substantial, right? In terms of the amount of energy that can be saved by using, you know, new parts. And, and, uh, so those are just some of the things that come out of, you know, while we need to do it anyways, we need to have updated, um, computers and technology. Uh, those are things that are part of it. And then, you know, at the end of the day, uh, I think, you know, the bottom one too, that as we've moved to more technology, you know, based, um, you, you know, Google platform, right, those types of things, it's less printing, it's less need for having to make copies and, um, you know, do those types of things. And we're, we're one-to-one at all of our schools now, so we have the technology. There's no need to print off worksheets or those types of things, right? So, um, you know, that I think is a, a positive thing in terms of really, you know, reducing the amount of paper usage and copy costs across the board.
Yeah, I was just curious, um, Ryan, do we, is there, um, when we look at new curriculum and is there eventually, do you foresee and, and foresee of a move away to just having ebooks as opposed to textbooks?
I don't, I mean, that's.
Just curious.
Yeah, I don't, again, I don't, I, if they should, that the, um, the book companies have caught up.
Okay.
Basically, right? And then, so again, that's another thing, right? So we talk about cost.
I think, I think there's some debate about.
Yeah.
About ebooks versus print books and paper books.
No, 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 I agree. And then there's a.
Yeah, there's a balance.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a balance, but I mean, for particular, no, I, I, particularly for different.
But again, that also, I mean, just, and again, I'm honest, right? So just to be honest, like it, it, it can be super expensive. So, cause book companies, they don't, you don't just, you know, when you buy a book, you have a book. And some of our textbooks, I mean, they'll last ten years, right? Versus a textbook company, yeah, will, um, you know, on an annual membership basis, will allow, you know, this many users to use that particular textbook. So I mean, you, that could be ten times as expensive, right? And so that's, you, you know, that's right now, that's kind of where we're at. So in the future, I would, hopefully that's gonna, you know, get easier and more of a process in terms of moving forward, right?
Well, I think to, to Mr. Mr. Ungar's point, I think there's this whole thing also, there was that debate, there's, there's a, you know.
Definitely kids.
So it's, yeah, different.
Everybody's pushing subscription-based, right?
Yes.
So they can, they can make more money.
Yeah. But the good news is, I would say for us, is that we actually now have the capability of computers in kids' hands to do some of that, right? Versus in the past, we didn't, we weren't even there yet. So we're definitely moving in the right direction to, to be able to have that type of conversation. Um.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah. Um, in talking about a reduction in paper and printing costs, so are we seeing or have, have we noticed or can quantify at all? Um, the, the reduction in cost of our consumables at school sites?
Yeah, probably not, I mean, no, there still is consumables that we do use. Um, I, I don't think you're seeing teachers have the copy machine. You know, like we used to see back in the day, the original machine type of thing as much. You know, a lot of things are online now, a lot of technology in terms of use, but not, not so, I mean, I'm not seeing, I would say from a budget standpoint, I'm not seeing the cost of copying going up. It's almost like it's, it's like staying the same flat, right? So even though it's probably more expensive, we're not using as much, so it's, um, you know, even, even from a district office standpoint, right? Like we used to send out those newspaper, community newspapers, right? The, with, with the pro- and, and there's something to be said for that and it's a nice thing. But, you know, now we're sending parent's card emails, where Dr. Prater every two weeks has a parent communication that goes out, right? So, you know, definitely a lot more e-communication happening than, than we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Um, again, we continue to work with city, county, Moro Bay, you know, we're currently, um, working with the county of San Luis Obispo, right? To use tertiary water at Los Socios Middle School, um, and so I'm right about.
Yeah, ongoing, yes.
I, we kind of see a light at the end of the tunnel with this one, maybe, right? It's, it's taking a lot of handholding to get that accomplished, I will tell you.
He, he literally just reached out yesterday.
Yes.
Is there a surplus of tertiary treated water and where is it going?
They are, so the county of San Luis Obispo is asking us to do this. So I'm assuming that there is tertiary water for this project, right? In particular, we're starting with Los Socios Middle School.
Right.
It's been ongoing, they've had a lot of turnover on their staff, so it seems like every other year, a new person comes on board and then, okay, let's go. And our staff meets them and we go through everything, we have plans, we kind of go forward and then it dies. And then next thing you know, two months later, there's a new person who's working at the county, who's leading this effort. And then we have to meet them out back at a Los Socios Middle School, we have to walk through the plan and we show them the site and we go through it. And, and then a couple of months go by and there's a new person at the county. And I mean, literally, we're probably like on our fifth.
At least, I mean, it's been going on for seven, eight years now.
So, and, and we have a new person now, and, and again, we are doing everything in our power to assist them in doing this. And so, I mean, Rick Stifson probably knows tertiary water now better than anybody in the county, right? So, um, but again, literally just this morning, we got an email asking if we could meet them back out at the site to walk the side and look at the, the different, you know, you know, irrigation versus the system and those types of things. So we get to be back out.
How do we get the purple pipes out there?
It's, it's already in the road.
It's already at the road.
So, and so it could have been when we did, they did the.
They did.
They did. So the, the biggest hiccup right now is more, since we have to split our system. More pressure, you know, some design issues, split it out, so.
Because this has to be irrigation water, right?
Right.
And so there's, there's issues with some of the irrigation spots where there's kids. So it's separate those systems, it almost becomes two systems.
Yeah.
For what? One purple water with the purple, you know, kind of tie-in, which is great, we'd love to use it, fantastic, right? Um, at a reduced rate. And then, but from a safety standpoint, you also have to have that kind of dual system where it's just your normal, you know, water going through. So, um, again, we're doing whatever we can to partner with them, help them, assist them in the process, um, as, as we move forward. It will keep doing that. Um, so again, a lot of, a lot of work with, uh, transportation, you know, huge kudos to city San Luis Obispo, um, and even the transportation. So they, you know, a lot of, uh, our students ride the city buses and ride the county buses. And so the fact that they, they offer that to our kids and tie it in is great, right? It's a fantastic thing. They have the same issues with finding drivers that we do. And there's been issues with some of their routes and being able to have drivers fill those routes. But, um, a- again, just a lot of effort goes into, you know, their assistance with our kids. Evelyn, you have a question?
No, I think I'll just, I was gonna ask you more in detail about the tertiary kind of thing, just because I'm.
Yeah, we can hear, so.
I love the time.
Um, so again, services, bike to school initiative.
Oh, I think you.
Eva, go ahead.
I think you're gonna get, you're about to go down the list here, right? So, so I'll wait until you finish that and then I'll ask my question, okay?
Perfect. So, um, again, a lot of bike to school initiatives, we have our Bike to School Day, we have our Walk to School Day, right? Those types of things that, that go on. Um, it's nice to know that that's gonna be a much safer thing for us to kind of put out to kids, uh, especially with a lot of the new bike routes and things, in particular around San Luis Obispo, the city itself, right? Um, so, so those are positives, I think. And then, uh, again, our, our education foundation has done a lot to reach out to groups. Um, you know, we have, again, the Trout in the Classroom, so it's a peace side preservation, uh, One Cool Earth and our school gardens, right? We have our I Innovate Labs, which have, you know, kind of a tie into climate and, uh, climate change and, and lessons. Um, and they also have tied in with Bike to Slow County. Uh, we, you know, for any student that needs a bicycle ride, that has transportation issues, uh, the foundation sets them up with a bike and helmet, a lock, uh, with the, the, the Slow County, you know, Bike Coalition, right? And, um, you know, they, they're even willing to train kids on how to use a bike. We assume kids know how to ride a bike and know, you know, how to facilitate all that. So they're, they're even willing to, like, give kids lessons and help them and, and go through that. So that's been a, another positive thing with the.
And how do we communicate that to parents that that's available?
It goes, so, again, it goes out into our parent newsletters, uh, all of our, um, our family advocates know about it, right? So they talk to the kids or hear about it or principal, those types of things. Then they, they directly, we, we connect the students to San, to the Bike, um, County Coalition through the Family Advocate Center sites.
Okay.
Thank you, I, I can ask my question now?
Yeah.
All right, um, so I love this, I mean, all of this is like antidote to everything going more virtual reality and losing touch with the earth, right?
Yes.
So this is like a balancing out, uh, which is so good for, um, our, uh, development of our children as well as our adults. Um, so I did participate in Trout in the Classrooms as a teacher, third grade teacher, for three years. It's a very exciting scientific project and then you take a field trip. And at the time, what we were doing and probably still is releasing the trout into the, um, Lake, uh, Lopez Lake uh, or other lakes, probably up here maybe, but I was in Luciamar. And, uh, before Trout, they were doing salmon, but for some reason they stopped, stopped raising salmon. But it goes from egg to fry, you know, to small fish and it's just really great for life cycles. And then the next, uh, actual question for you is perhaps this is included in the One Cool Earth School Gardens, but in addition to the fish project, we also raised, or at least I did, uh, earthworms to work out in the, uh, work with the composting programs. And so do you have earthworms in the classroom?
I'm not, I'm not positive about that.
You know, I.
I know that there's some composting.
I can, I can, I can, well, Eva, there is a, with integrated waste management, they or, um, classrooms and teachers.
They're the ones, yes, they're the ones.
Interested in doing that, they would bring your, you know, box of worms, I participated in that and it's.
Right.
They trade them out and whatever. So it really is kind of up to, to, um, you know, the individual teacher. And then there's, that was, a lot of it was before the schools were having their kind of composting and things like that. So now that the schools and schoolwide are doing that, I think there's less focus on that. But I know that was available and teachers could use that as part of their class unit science.
Right, well, it, it seems like it would work real well with the school gardens, which I've, but I voiced my support for expanding that last May. So, yeah, I was just so, so happy to see that's happening and more organic, we need more organic, it's healthy, it's healthy. Thank you for those who are supporting that.
So let me, hold on, I got one. So, uh, we, we put a couple of, um, again, potential corporate partnerships, right? So we have PG&E with their community outreach, um, you know, depending on what's gonna happen with PG&E and the, the land conservation of that area, right, around, uh, the canyon, well, you know, potential, uh, things we could tie in with, with them. And then also we have, uh, Vistra, the, the battery storage plant, right, potentially coming to Moro Bay. Uh, and so, you know, are there ways that we could tie into that as well as, um, you know, support kind of the coastal education there? You know, Moro Bay High School classes, students, you know, it's right there, right? It's, it's next door, you know, in terms of, uh, some of the coastal students there. So we'll, we'll see how that, you know, goes in the future. And then I think, um, again, just kind of some, you know, again, next steps, vision for the future, right? So I, I think, again, we, we could look at, uh, the potential, you know, the wind farms, right? Those types of things outside Moro Bay in the future. Um, we'll continue to look at transitioning from gas powered to electric or battery powered. You know, our buses, vehicles, blowers, trimmers, equipment, riding boers that we talked about, um, as well as any other types of, um, you know, things that, that we can move forward on, I would say in that, in, in that range. Um, I, I put promote all district sites to zero net energy, energy because it's not, it's, it's easier in some sites than it is in others, right? So, and, and especially if we increase solar at some of our campuses, that, that could be a goal that we can, you know, we can possibly, um, get to. Like we did at Los Socios Middle School, right? Uh, but it, it, it really depends on the amount of energy the school uses, the size that, you know, the amount of solar you put in, those types of things. So, but, but definitely something we can look at and, and move towards. Um, again, we will continue to, to look for state and local grant funding opportunities. I think, uh, as Mr. Buckman said, you know, looking at those charging stations, those types of things that we can put into place will be great. Um, and then lastly, you know, as, as we move forward with our new construction modernization, you know, we should see, um, substantial, you know, savings, right? In, in terms of, because our, our new buildings have these energy efficiency, um, tied into them, whether it be the roofing, whether it be the insulated windows, walls, you know, those types of things, you know, there, there should be some positives that come out of that. Um, the last one was just, uh, again, was this student perspective piece, right? Which we, we heard from them, it sounded like from Mrs. McCarthy that there might be some other students out there that might want to, uh, might want to share. And so I'm more than happy to have them come on board, Ms. McCarthy.
Hi, um, I just had a question, uh, when I was watching this presentation on slide, uh, five. Um, when you say, uh, under the 2020 column, how it says, we need to work on recycling programs. We've had difficulty with students not recycling, recycling property, properly, sorry. Um, have you implemented any like education programs with that? I know on the 2022 side, it says that, uh, you've added small blue recycle cans in every classroom, which is definitely helpful. But, um, like, is there any program to teach these kids how to recycle properly?
I, I think it's something we need to do, Meg. I, you know, that's probably the next step, right? Now that we have the cans there, we have everything. At the elementary level, it's really those new duty people, kind of, as kids come up and throw their, their, you know, food away. Um, you know, they use the three different bins, right? Um, you know, kind of like we should in terms of breaking it up. But I would say at the secondary level, no, is the answer to your question. We need to work more with kids and, uh, and have a better program, right? So that's something I think that we could, you know, to me is, is really a good joint project with the district and students because I think kids will listen to you more probably than, than they, they might listen to us. So I'm totally willing to work with you guys and, and set something up, you know, to, to help with that education.
But I, I was gonna respond to her that I know that, you know, at the elementary school sites, Integrated Waste Management came into the classrooms and had a really thorough presentation of what students could do, not only, you know, globally, but actually in their classrooms and really from very young ages, it really had an impact, you know, with, you know, they encouraged the teachers and then other students that peer-to-peer, even at really young ages, that you hopefully, then you're starting at really young ages, then you, that carries up through to where, what you're seeing. So, um, I, I think there's been a little bit of, um, I don't know, dissolution in Integrated Waste Management or, but, but it is a, it's a very strong program that has been, um, you know, teachers can, um, make use of that and they come in and do great presentations, educational presentations.
Well, Evelyn didn't, they also have field trips, right? They're on the grounds of the Integrated Waste Management. So you, third graders, that used to be a regular, uh, field trip to go to the dump. Doesn't sound exciting, but it wa- actually was, so to the landfill really, you know, so, yeah, they do have those field trips also.
My third grade daughter went to one when she was in the third grade and I remember she came home and said, dad, if you, if you leave all the recycling in the bag, they throw the whole bag away and it's not recycling anymore. So now, since that day, since you came home and told me because you went on the field trip, um, that we empty out the bag into our recycling, right? To keep it separated, otherwise they just, it becomes land, you know, landfill. So, yeah, it, they definitely do that even so, um, you know, it's a positive thing.
So I think, I think you said, I think you said we had some, oh, I'm sorry, you, go ahead.
Just as a matter, I mean, but we do have, uh, recycling bins and trash bins. So if it, if that whole bag is in the recycling bill bin, it should not be thrown away. I'm, I'm getting concerned about it now because I still bag mine. We can get this worked out.
You have to empty it out.
Well, okay, I'll call.
I'm almost positive you have to empty out your bag into your recycling.
I will call and find out. I know they were encouraging that for a while, but it seems so, um, so, so, so it's like things can fall all over the place, right? And make more. And make more litter, so I, I'm gonna call and I'll, I'll let you know what I find out.
Yeah.
I think Meg wanted to say something.
I, I was just gonna say, um, I think we have some more student voices to hear from. It is almost one o'clock and I think we should try to wrap this up as close to one o'clock as possible. So who else from the student group, um, has comments?
And then we got Tobin here and L M K, are either one of you guys presenting or?
Okay.
Well, I'll do, I'm just gonna put it out there.
So, I'm a student in Ms. McCartney's class and, um, I just feel like, um, environmental science right now is such an important subject for kids in like my grade or kind of any age to learn about. Um, I know that personally, like, I've made a lot of changes in my lifestyle, um, in terms of just like how I live and how I act. Um, so I feel like environmental science should be, I mean, not right now, but like definitely in the future, required course at SoHi. Um, I don't know if this is the right platform to present this, but, uh, I just, yeah, I just wanted to put my insight onto that.
Awesome.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Ella Staples, also a student at SoHi. And I just want to say, all these steps that we're taking, I think are very important. But, um, as a student, also in environmental science, I've also learned about a little bit of these steps that we're taking as of right now. But I definitely feel like these things need to be, you know, addressed more and more advertised. Because I feel like if I was never, you know, interested in stuff like this, I would have had no idea that people were taking these steps and, um, being more environmentally aware. I also feel like stuff like this shouldn't just be addressed to people in the environmental positions or positions such as like school boards and stuff. I think that everyone should, you know, have an education of this course and just, in general, steps of this matter. Because as teenagers, we're entering the workforce sooner than later. And I think especially with us, it's important for us to know what steps we're taking now, so we can eventually evolve from that, you know? And not have the burden on mostly adults and also have it on us, taking more of that responsibility, just to be more aware. And I think that would like be very important for all of us, just to get that general education of everything that's happening right now. And, you know, maybe eventually having a class like environmental and science, like a requirement eventually, and just having these steps. As of right now, just being way more addressed.
And adding on to what Ella says, I really think it's important that students see that environmental actions are important, um, for staff and teachers. Cause I feel like growing up in an environment where, where like you see that's a priority, that's going to motivate students to like develop into like environmentally conscious like adults. And I feel like that's the main way that we can, like, achieve real change, is if everyone kind of realizes that there needs to be change. So I think, um, seeing that, um, environmental actions, action is important to all of you guys and to teachers, I think that would send a really good message to students.
Is there anybody else, any of the other students? Cause if not, um, I do need to go to the public, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board on this item? It's gonna depend on Mrs. Dot.
Looks like Mrs. McCartney.
Um, Mrs. McCartney, did you, do you have something else? Mrs. Dawson says there's no one from the public, but Mrs. McCartney, go ahead, please.
Um, I just wanted to thank you all, uh, my students have been chatting a lot in the background with each other and they and I both appreciate your time letting them speak. Um, I think some of their comments are just, they really appreciate seeing for them how seriously you take this and the efforts being put into place, um, at all levels in our district to address things that they've now become, you know, very aware of and very concerned with. So, um, the learning opportunity you gave them by inviting them to attend this has been tremendous. Um, and just you, listening to them has empowered them because they have become aware of a lot, uh, this year. So thank you for allowing them to speak and participate.
Thank you very much, and, um, I think the, the board and, uh, recognizes that, that, that you are the future and you're going to be the guardians of our earth, you know? We're going to be handing this over to you and the things that we as, as adults can do to hand you a better place is going to be better for all of us. And so I just really want to thank all of you for your efforts and your, your really, your really consciousness toward this issue, um, that is so critical. Possibly, um, the most critical issue our, I think we'll be facing in, in our lifetime, certainly. So thank you. Is there anybody else, Mr. Buckman, and then I, you know, no other board members, I, it is one o'clock, right?
And I apologize, been holding off on this. I think this district is great and I think we're making great strides and it, and I, I want to just carry on from what Chris just said. So Chris Unger sits at the CSBA at the state level. And at a meeting where we were discussing the future policy of CSBA, Chris was an advocate for climate change, I don't know, was it four years ago, Chris?
Two, two or three years.
Two, three years ago, and, and so I just want to point that out. Um, that led to the formation of a, a committee at CSBA that wrote, did research on resources. And, um, I think wrote this resolution or added to this resolution. And so I just want to, just want, I mean, we've got Marilyn drives an electric car, Eve drives an electric car. I mean, I think this board's kind of got their money where their mouth is when it comes to the environment. And I'm just, I am really proud of everybody, but I just want everybody to know Chris has been pushing at the state level for this.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Well, is that it, are you?
Yeah, I just, listen, I, like, like the kids, I love hearing from kids. You know, right, like they, they give you the information, that's why the students send it so fantastic, right? Like they tell you straight up, like this is what we're seeing outside, so, um, we'll take everything that we heard today and I'm gonna be meeting with Mr. Mon and we'll have some action plans to move forward. So it's great, it was good to hear from them.
Great, so thank you, Dr. Prater, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, and we will have our, we will be meeting next Tuesday, I think it's the.
Yeah, at Los Socios Middle School Library.
Right, I think it's the fifteenth, I believe, something.
It is the March fifteenth.
March fifteenth. We will have our open session meeting at five o'clock, we invite everybody to come this usual. And the meeting will be televised on Zoom as well as through AGP.
Correct.
So thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.